Good evening. I am Armando Cuellar Jr., President of the Westaco ISD Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to Governor Greg Abbott's suspension of certain open meeting law requirements to the extent necessary to follow for telephonic and video conference meetings in response to COVID-19. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. The Board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is 5:40. And I call this public hearing to order. Although a quorum is not necessary, I will acknowledge the trustees present. Mrs. Jacqui Sosaita. Mr. Andrew Gonzalez.
Here.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez.
Present.
Coach Jesse Trevino.
Right here.
Mr. Isidoro Nieto.
Present.
And Mr. Mark Del Rosso.
Present.
We do have a full quorum of trustees. Item three, Public Hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report. Dr. Canales.
Board Trustees, this is the annual report that's provided to Board of Trustees regarding performance of students, regarding information about human resources, school safety, and information from the business office. So there'll be several presenters for this report. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Elias Trevino, who will begin the report. Mr. Trevino.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Cuellar, members of the Board, Dr. Canales. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present on the Texas Academic Performance Report, also known as the paper. The comprehensive taper provides details of district and campus academic performance, along with financial reports and information about staff, programs, and also demographics. Texas Education Code 39.036 requires that all districts' Board of Trustees hold a public hearing, as we're doing here today, to discuss the district's annual report within 90 calendar days of receiving the taper, so we are within that requirement. You may recall, Board, that Governor Abbott on March 16, 2020, canceled All-Star and End-of-Course exams, and thus some sections of the taper were not able to be updated and instead contain 2018 and 2019 data. All other sections of the taper are up to date and are reflected in tonight's presentation. The Department of Assessment and Accountability closely and constantly monitors the data such as provided through the taper to ensure that we share that data accordingly with all the departments, so that we are ensuring that we are interpreting that data correctly. And our final goal is, of course, increase student achievement. As you can see here on the screen, these are all the committing. It also includes the strategists that came together to provide this report. As we just mentioned, Governor Abbott canceled Star and End-of-Course, and as a result, the accountability rating that was given to all districts throughout the entire state is listed on the screen, not rated, declared state of disaster, and of course, we understand as a result of COVID-19. So the 2019 data that we're providing here on this screen gives you an overview of all of our campuses, and I want to focus your attention all the way to the right. And these are the letter grade rating that our campuses and district actually received in 2019. So as you can see, all of our campuses and the district are either an A or a B, and you've may have already heard us mention this several times before. We were the only six A large district that actually accomplished all campuses and the district having earned an A or a B, no C. So this is an overview of the 2019 star performance across all the three domains. On the following slide, you have the 2019-2020 district accreditation status, and of course, we, Westaco ISD, is an accredited district. Where do we find that information? That link is found at the bottom of this slide. We're happy to report that in 2020, our special education determination status out of the results-driven accountability, and also in the paper is that Westaco ISD meets the requirements. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Raguilat, who's going to spend the next few slides discussing the academic performance, again, based on 2019 data.
Thank you, Ms. Trevino. President Cuellar, Dr. Canales, members of the Board. What you have before you is you have the 2019 star summary, year-over-year performance, and you have this slide which has third, fourth, and fifth grade reading. And I want to call your attention to the gray, well, excuse me, the purple bar, and there's three bars that we're looking at. Westaco ISD being the purple, orange being the region, and blue being the state. So when we do the year-over-year data, we look at it, you see that steady increase from third grade. We went from 2018 to 2019. You see the purple bar above the region and the state. In fourth grade, you saw the increase from a 73 all the way up to an 84, so that was a significant jump in fourth grade. And of course, you see the steady increase in fifth grade reading. So very good increases for the reading. Next slide. We have the mathematics for third, fourth, and fifth grade, year-over-year performance. And if you're looking at third grade, you see the same thing. We want to pay attention to the purple bar, and you see that it has showed improvement from 18 and 19. The growth, same thing for fourth grade math. You see the growth there and how it compares to the region and the state, and you see the increase in fifth grade and how it compares to the region and the state. Next slide. What you have before you here is the writing and the science for the elementary, and you're looking at 18 and 19. We were very proud of our writing from 2018 to 2019. We had a 16% increase, so that was a significant jump, and we competed over there with the region and, of course, above the state. And if you see the science, you see the steadiness, but we're above the region and the state as well. Next slide. Jumping into the middle schools. What you see here, you also have the comparison for Westaco ISD, the region and the state. And here, you see sixth grade, seventh, and eighth grade reading, and you see some of the declines in some of the areas. A couple wanted to make a reference, so when you're looking at middle schools and you're looking at the transition grade, you're looking at the content, and we have several variables at play where we have acceleration. So that goes into some of the factors where you may notice a slight decline in some of the comparisons there. So you see sixth grade, the comparison, seventh grade, the comparison there with the reading, and eighth grade on how they compare to the region and the state. Next slide. If you're looking here, you have the math, same thing. We're looking at the transition, the content being presented, and the acceleration. One thing that we look at, sometimes you look at sixth grade when you're looking at transition for math, we accelerate students that do take assessments at the level that's deemed appropriate for them, so that may show a layer of support where there may be a decrease in sixth grade. But you're looking at seventh grade, they're pretty much up there. They show the growth compared to the region and the state, and same thing for eighth grade. Next slide. Middle school writing, science, and social studies, year-over-year performance. If you're looking at the writing, it's slightly below the region, but along, in one point below the state. If you're looking at the science, you see the increase from the 77 to the 81, and they're above the region and the state. And if you're looking at social studies, you see the increase from 18 to 19, and it's in line with the region and the state and an improvement from last year. Next slide. If you're looking at English I, English II, and Algebra I, you're looking at, with English I, that we, how we compared in 18, and we did show some improvement going into 19. For English II, same thing, how we compared to the region and the state, and you see the improvement that grew from 57 to 61%. And in Algebra I, there was a slight decline there, but how we compare to the region and the state. Next slide. Then you have biology and U.S. history. So you see Westaco, where they compare to the region and the state from 18 to 19 in biology, and of course, you see the improvement from 83 to 86. And in U.S. history, it stayed the same, but how we compare to the region and the state as well. Next slide. What you have before you, these are performance levels, and you have the approaches. We call the approaches means that the student passed the star assessment, but more than likely will still struggle the following year. We're excited to see that there was growth in every student group, with the exception of our white group that we see there. One thing we attributed there was to some coding issues that we had, and it was a very small group, but overall, we had growth from 19 to 18. Next slide. If we're looking at the Meets performance level on star, this indicates that the student is working on grade level, so as you can see, the growth from 18 to 19, and every student group had a growth, with the exception of special ed, it was one percentage point below. Next slide.
Good time, Mr. Canales.
Slide, you have the master's grade level, which indicates that the student is working above grade level, and we're proud to show in every student category from 18 to 19, there was an increase, and all students were working above grade level. We have the growth there. Next slide. What you have here are attendance rate compared to state, region, and Westaco ISD. This is also information that lags behind from the state, but if we look at Westaco ISD to the far right, how we compare to the region and how we compare to the state, and from last year, we were one-tenth of a percentage point below from the previous year, but we're above the region and the state. Next slide. At this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. Norma Brewer.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Cuellar, members of the Board, and Dr. Canales. I will be discussing information about graduation information and college readiness. Here we have the dropout rate. The lower the number, the better on this slide. Westaco ISD was at 1.4% during the year of 1819, 1.5% during 1718. That was lower than the region, lower than the state. It was, the 2018-19 was the same as the region, but lower than the state. So the lower the number, the better we are here under dropout rate. Next slide, please. Here we have graduation rates divided up by subgroups. We have our ELL group in light blue. We've got our ECO DIS group, economically disadvantaged students. We've got in green our special ed students, in orange our Hispanic population, and in blue, all students. Here we have the four-year, five-year, and six-year graduation rate. Most of our students graduate under the four-year rate. Very few are part of the five-year rate, and many, many, very, very few are in the six-year rate. So our four-year graduation rate is 93.8, and we're, every year, we're trying to increase that graduation rate. Next slide, please. Here we have a slide that talks about the advanced graduation plans. We have the foundation high school program with endorsements and the distinguished level of achievement plan. Here, under 2018, we're at 92.9% of students that graduate under those advanced plans, and in 2019, we're at 90.1%. In 2018, we are higher than the region and the state, and in 2019, we are higher than the state, but a little lower than the region. And these are our advanced plans. Next slide, please. This slide talks about college and career-ready students, and this is for the class of 2019. Every year when we receive this report, this information lags one year, so we're always looking at the class of the previous year. Here we have college-ready graduates. These are students that have completed dual enrollment classes, AP classes, TSI testing in math and reading, associate's degrees, or industry-based certifications. Here we're at 47.6%, a little lower than the region and the state. Next slide, please. This slide talks about AP tests and also dual credit courses. So the first part is the class of 2018. We're at 45% for AP dual course completion, and 2019, we're at 46.1%. 2018, we're higher than the state, and 2019, we're also higher than the state. On AP participation in all subjects, we are at 17.4% in 2018 and 16.5% in 2019. We're a little lower than the region and the state, and we attribute this to the fact that we have a very strong dual enrollment program, and a lot of our students take dual enrollment instead of AP exams, but we continue to push our AP program. The bottom, we have AP exams, criterion in all subjects. In 2018, we're at 36.0%, and 2019, we're at 30.3%. In 2018, we're higher than the region, and in 2019, we're a little lower than the region and the state. Next slide, please. Here we have SAT and ACT indicators for the class of 2018. The number of students that tested were 54.6% for 2018, lower than the region and the state, and 2019, 50.8%. This was for the class of 2021. This number's going to drastically increase because we tested all juniors last year for ACT. Add or above criterion on class of 2018, we're at 15.3%. Class of 2019, we're at 14.1%. Average SAT score for 2018, we're at 10.26, higher than the region, a little lower than the state. Class of 2019, 10.70, higher than the region, higher than the state. Average ACT score, class of 2018, we're at 18.6%, higher than the region, a little lower than the state. Class of 2019, 8.2%, higher than the region, a little lower than the state. Next slide, please. Here we have the performance in post-secondary institutions. So the institution of higher ed, which is called the IHE, they're referring to STC, UTRGB, any institute, any post-secondary institution that our students enroll in. For the class of 2017, we have 53% of our students enrolled, lower than the region, a little lower than the state. For class of 2018, we have 51% of students enrolled, lower than the region and the state. Now, the bottom portion talks about students that enrolled in an IHE without, one year without remediation. So our goal is to prepare students so that they don't have to take remedial courses at college/university level. In 2017, we had 48.8%, and 2018, we had 52.1%. Next slide, please. We have the number of graduates. Every year, we graduate the majority of our students, as the previous slide showed, 94%. And here, this particular information talks about the number of students that are enrolled in institutes of higher ed, four-year programs or two-year programs. So, and the Westaco East, they had 394 students graduate, and this is for the class of 2019, and 91 attended a four-year public university and two-year, I mean, 121, 25 attended a two-year public university. So for Westaco East, about 57% of their students attended these types of universities. This does not include the students that joined the armed forces or things that leave out of state. Okay, this is just state information. Then we have Westaco High. Out of 559 graduates, we had 135 enroll at a four-year public university and 195 in a two-year. 135 and 195, that's about 59% of the graduating class. And then we have Cade Early College High School. They had 74 graduates. 14 of them attended a four-year university and 21 attended a two-year university. And then our highly at-risk population at South Palms, we have a very large graduation rate at South Palms, 176 students. That was one of the first classes that we had that many students graduate from South Palms. This is our highly at-risk population. 21 of them attended a two-year program.
So we're going to pass this on. Thank you, Ms. Norma. We're going to pass this on to Mr. Michael De La Rosa.
Yes, and good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. President, members of the Board. This report has also included standard in the taper. This is the disciplinary incidents by campus, by disciplinary action reason. So basically, the methodology for identifying a USCO campus, so a campus will be identified as a persistently dangerous school or PDS as required to implement the unsafe school choice option or USCO if it meets any of the following. So those are the four criteria. The first one is, of course, is the campus is coded as regular instructional campus and Ask Ted, but I'm going to focus on the last one, which is the campus has 200 or more students and the number of mandatory expellable incidents per year is equal to 1% or more if it's, excuse me, 1% or more of its enrollment in each of the most three recent years. So next slide, please, Mr. Trevino. So based on those disciplinary reasons or action codes, I've indicated the reported instances for the 1920 school year, and of course, they're at Westaco High School East and DAP and the discipline code 36, which is a family felony control substance violation. So any one of the disciplinary action codes listed below is counted for that in identifying a persistently dangerous school or PDS. So the incidents represent less than 1% of the enrollment, and we're pleased to note that Westaco ISD is not a persistently dangerous school or PDS under the Every School Succeeds Act. And if anyone's interested in obtaining more data on this, I've indicated the website there from TEA, which they can get that information from. Next slide, please, Mr. Trevino. So these are some of the school violence prevention and their action policies that we have at Westaco ISD, of course, the school resource officers at each of the main high schools and the middle schools, K9s, the DAP program, social workers at all secondary campuses, threat assessment teams, counseling transition services. As you can see, there's many there. So that concludes my report, unless anyone has any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. We're going to turn this over to our Human Resources Director, Ms. Melva Segura.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, members of the Board. I will be presenting the staff information. As my colleagues have mentioned, the Texas Academic Performance Report, also known as the paper, pulls together a wide range of information on the performance of students, but it also includes extensive information on school district staff. And so the first table that you see here is a percentage of full-time FTEs that are being reported in each of the job roles that are defined in our peerless reporting. The first category that we, professional staff, and that encompasses teachers, professional support staff, campus administration, and central office administration. And so here we can see that Westaco ISD is at 60.2%, which is below the state and above the regional percentage there. The next category, teachers. Westaco ISD is at 42, I'm sorry, 47.2%, which is below the state and above the regional percentage. Professional staff, I'm sorry, professional support, that includes therapists, nurses, librarians, counselors, and any other professional staff in our district. We also include our SIFs at each of our campuses, which are our instructional facilitators. Westaco ISD is at 10.8%, which is above the state and the region, and that could be because our district classifies these assistants as SIFs as opposed to assistant principals, which most of our districts report them as. This also attributes to the next category, campus administration. Westaco ISD is reporting 1.2%, which is below both the Texas and regional percentage. And once again, that is attributed to the fact that the majority of our assistants at our campuses are classified as instructional facilitators versus assistant principals. We do have assistant principals at our middle school and our two comprehensive high schools. Moving on to the next category, central administration. Westaco ISD is at 1%, which is below the state and the regional level. And in the category of educational aid, we are at 8.3%, which is also below both the state and the regional indicator. I would like to say that every year, we're looking closely at our instructional aids, and we are increasing those numbers specifically in the areas of our pre-K instructional aids and our special ed as needed. So we do see a change in that category every year. In the final category, excellent, we are at 31.6%, which is above the state and below the regional indicator there. We can move on to the next slide. The next slide, we do have information regarding teachers by years of experience, and the percentages that you do see on this table reflect a full-time FTEs, FTE counts of teachers by total years of experience for the individual, not necessarily years of experience in our district as a whole or campus. So teachers' count, counts within each range of experience are expressed in percentages of total FTEs, as I mentioned, in our district. They're broken down in several categories, starting with beginning teacher. This is the zero-year experience teacher. Westaco ISD is at 1.6%, which is below the state and the regional indicator here. Next category, one through five years of experience. Westaco ISD is at 10.8%, which is also below the state and the region. Moving on to the next category, years of experience, six through 10 years of experience. Westaco ISD is once again at 17.5, below the state and the region. And this next category is where it really changes. In the years of 11 through 20 years of experience, Westaco ISD is above the state and the region at 40%. In over 20 years of experience, Westaco ISD, once again, is over the state and the region at 30%, almost double the percentage there. And the next category is not something that we're required to report, but I wanted to go ahead and disclose to our community and our board, the turnover rate for teachers in Westaco ISD is at 7%, which is drastically below the state and the region. Now, we have seen an increase every year. This percentage goes up by 1% is the trend that we have seen, and that is attributed to the teacher percentages in the higher category of 20-plus years' experience. You know, our teachers stay for long periods of time in our district, and you know, they get to a certain point where, you know, they're basically working for free, and they must retire at that point. And so we know that this information has been changing as teachers continue to explore retirement, but we know to anticipate an increase as well due to COVID. So I'm happy to report that we're at such low percentage there. We are the lowest. I want the Board to know that we are the lowest with regards to districts our size. Other districts our size are at, Mission, CIIS, at 9.7%. We have Donna ISD at 9.6%, and then we have Harlingen, CIIS, at 11.2 as far as their turnover rate. So I think we're in very good position here at Westaco ISD. Moving over to the average teacher salaries. This is the total pay for teachers in each category divided by the total FTEs for each category based on experience. Now, just keep in mind that this is the total pay for their regular teaching instructional duties. This does not include any stipend or supplemental duties. Basically, here on this table, what you can see is Westaco ISD is above both the state and the region in every category, with the exception of the last category for the region of over 20 years' experience. The region is at 69,107, and Westaco ISD is at 68,325, a difference of $728. And this is something that we'll continue to study and look at once we start working on the compensation plan for the teacher pay scale for next year, and I'll make sure to report any findings or updates to that change. Moving on to the next. This table here gives us the experience of campus leadership. I do want to note that in reference to campus leadership, they're talking or basically reporting on the two roles of principal and assistant principal only. So this does not include our SIFs or curriculum instructional facilitators. The percentages indicated on this table are basically the number of completed years of experience in each role defined, as I mentioned, regardless, once again, of the district that they were in or if there was an interruption in service. Basically, here we can see that Westaco ISD is above the region and the state in all categories, again, the exception of the last category, as I mentioned, the average year of experience. of assistant principals with the district, WISD, is above the state but below, slightly below, the region in this area. Moving on to the final one. So this was my final slide. I just wanted to make a comment that in summary, you know, based on the information that was presented, there's some major areas that we find where Westaco ISD stays behind. Actually, the information that was presented is very clear that Westaco ISD continues to be, remain a leader in being competitive with regards to our compensation, our recruitment, and our retention. So I'm happy to to see the information. It shows that Westaco ISD is not only the right choice for our students, but also for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Segura. We appreciate your presentation. We will now pass it over to Mr. Andres Sanchez, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Trevino, Dr. Canales, Mr. Quay, members of the board. I'm going to speak about financial information. This information, as you can see, is the fiscal year 2018, 2019, not last year, is based on audited information. And audited information is barely getting uploaded to TA last week, this week, and maybe a couple more weeks. So it's not ready for comparison throughout the state or the region. On the tax rates, what you can see in the first row, total tax rate, Westaco ISD is at 1, prompted to 116. The region is at almost 129, and the state is at 131. So we are a lot lower, and we have been lower than them for a long time. Did you hear me? Correct. Sorry, I'm a little with the mic here. Did you hear what I said? For the record?
Yeah, we heard it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Now, the remaining two rows is the breakdown of the maintenance and operations, and then the interest in thinking we are lower than. On the maintenance and operations, we're higher than the region and the state by four cents. But we are lower than the INS. As you can see, we are only at two pennies. And the region is at 18 pennies and the state at 21. So we're a lot lower when it comes to the taxes issued to pay for bond debt. Can you please go to the next slide? This item is related to revenues. And this is only for the operating revenues, which is the general fund. The local property tax revenue, Westaco ISD is at 14%, the region at 17%, and the state at 44%. You can see that we're very low compared to the region and the state. Our property is considered a property, a poor property, sorry. What do you call it? Economically, it's poor compared to land in Dallas, for example. The values are a lot higher. So you can see in Texas, the average is 44%. But the tax revenues are higher up in most of the state. But we're a lot lower here because of the same reason, we have higher revenues from the state. Westaco is at 67%, the region at 63, and the state at 39. On the federal funds, we get 17% of our revenues is from federal, the region as well, and the state is only 12%. And other local revenues, which are 1.5%, the region at 3%, and the state at 5%. Any questions on that? Okay, next slide, please. The next one is on the expenditures. I grouped the expenditures in four sections. The first one is instructively related. It includes functions 11, top 13, 31, and 95. This is basically 11 is everything instructional, also the library, 13 start development plus instruction facilitators, 31 is for counseling services, and these are all the ones that support the students. And 95 is additional expenditures related to instruction. Instructional support are activities that support instruction, like 31 is supposed to say 32, the second one. That is for social work, 33 for nursing, 34 for transportation, 35 for food service, and 36 for extracurricular activities. The next section is administration, CNI, campuses and district. It's a function of 21, 23, 41, and 92. These are, as mentioned about administration, the CNI is at 21, campus is 23, and the district is 41. And the last one is district-wide support. This is a function of 51, 2, 3, and 61. This is the maintenance, operations, energy management section, security, data processing, which is technology, and 61 is the community involvement that we have, all those activities. Now, I'll go to the percentages. For Westaco, we are 63% on instruction. The region is at 61, so we're higher than them by 2%. And the state is at 63, so we're almost the same. Instructional support, we're at 16%. The region is at 15, we're 1% higher, and the state is at 13, so we're 3% higher than the state on instructional support. Administration, we are at 8%, the region at 11, and the state at 11. So we are lower than them by 3%. And district-wide support, we are at 14%, the region half a percent less, and the state 1% less. So we are slightly over in those departments. That's the only information I have on finances.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. We appreciate that. And this includes our presentation. If we do not have any questions, I do want to let you know also that state statute requires that we post the taper report on our website. So it's nested in the board, Westaco ISD Board section of WISD.us. And the full report can actually also be found off of this link. So I don't know if we have any questions from any of the board.
I have one question for Andres. On 95, what did you say? We utilize 95 for?
Yes, sir. That is the one that we do with the county. For disciplinary students that have to go to the school.
Okay.
That's what we have.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions before we turn it back over to Dr. Canales?
Anyone? Dr. Canales?
Thank you. President, that concludes the taper report that's required.
Very, very, very detailed report. Of course, we were aware of where we stood prior to the pandemic. And we, I know that we're working as hard as we can to maintain as close as we can that level of excellence. And I'm very, very confident there are teachers and staff, everybody. The hard work that everybody's putting in is going to get us back on track, you know. I fully understand that, you know. As difficult as it is, you know, we've stayed focused on what is important. And we're very appreciative, and y'all are doing an outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That takes us to item four. Do we have any public comments? We have none? That brings us to item five, adjournment. This meeting is now adjourned. The time is 6:17.
Good evening. My name is Armando Cuellar Jr., President of the Westaco ISD Board of Trustees. This regular board meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Greg Abbott's suspension of certain open meeting law requirements to the extent necessary to allow for telephonic and video conference meetings in response to COVID-19. Notice that this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is 6:27. And I call this meeting to order. I will now begin roll call. And when I call your name, signify by saying aye. Mrs. Jackie Susaita?
Aye.
Mr. Andrew Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez?
Aye.
Coach Jesse Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Siro Roñeto?
Aye.
Mr. Mark de los Santos?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that we have a forum of members in attendance. Number three, opening prayer. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, our opening prayer will be led by Ms. Ruby Garza, librarian at PFC Mario Ibarra Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I'm going to ask it, everybody back ahead. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon to come and work. First and foremost, we are grateful for the love, the compassion, and your grace over every single one of us present in this meeting. We are so grateful that we get to work together as a united group of individuals that care deeply for the well-being and education of the children and adolescents of our great community. Although 2020, 2021 has not been an ordinary year, we must acknowledge that you have walked with us, you have guided us, and you have equipped us with the tools and resources that we need to do the task before us with our hands. It is not easy for you, and we've lost many beautiful and wonderful educators, family members, and friends. And while their absence pains us in memory of their love and who they were lived on through us and encourages us to keep pushing forward. We thank you today for all your blessings despite the pandemic and the losses. We continue to see successful outcomes in each one of our 20 schools, many departments, and events. We are grateful for these victories. We ask for the safety and well-being of all our staff, with the teaching and support teams, that our words and actions be guided by the love and compassion of the Holy Spirit. We are grateful and privileged to have this calling. May our actions and words always encourage your students to trust you and seek you, give us patience and strength for the journey that is ahead. We also take this time to ask you for any Westaco ISD family who is in need of your divine meaning. We pray that your presence and light and hand would bring them peace, comfort, and supernatural healing. We pray for everyone of our students, beginning with their pre-K babies all the way up to our seniors as they attend their classes via remote or in-person learning. Bless them and protect them every day. Be with them as they open their minds and meet new knowledge and understanding. We ask that you help them with their challenges that are up ahead. Give them strength and courage to be successful and victorious in everything that they do. Today, we come before you and also humbly ask you to be with our board members and our administrative leaders. We ask you to pour wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength over them. Be with them in liberations and help them to be wise in the decisions that they make for our students and staff as we have placed our trust and confidence in our leadership. Give them insight to lead with integrity, with the decisions that they make, where they reflect what is right, what is honest, and what is good. Dear Lord, grant all the humanity to always seek the result in all that we sow into. We thank you once again for everything that you do for us, for us to be able to. We confess victories in the great future over Westaco ISD in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Item four, pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, our pledge of allegiance will be led by a fourth grader from Mario Ibarra Elementary. She is the daughter of a mandalenees, and her name is Camila Barrosa. Camila has been part of the Ibarra Art Club for the past five years, and her artwork has been recognized and showcased at various district and out-of-district events. She has also been recognized as artist of the first six weeks and third six weeks by her art teacher for this school year. Camila represents Ibarra Elementary at the superintendent student advisory committee meetings. In the future, Camila plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and study to become a lawyer. Ms. Camila Barrosa, you will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America and to republic, original stands, one nation, under God, and a living will with liberty and justice for all under the Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to three under the Texas pledge and Homer.
Okay, let's stop. Thank you. Thank you, Camila.
Thank you, Camila.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, awards and recognitions. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, we have several awards and recognitions this evening. Mr. Roblevo will lead us through the recognitions, beginning with our Future Farmers of America star winners. Mr. Roblevo?
Yes, Dr. Canales, if you'd like to get that slide presentation going, so we take a look at some of our students here. Because tonight, we want to recognize several Future Farmers of America students who recently competed at the South Texas Agricultural Roundup. Just waiting for that slide presentation to get started here. All right, looks like we got it going here. Like we said, we want to recognize the several students from the Future Farmers of America, students who recently competed in the South Texas Agricultural Roundup. And we'll start off with some students from West Loco East High School. Almost there.
Mr. Roblevo, one second, please. It's not, it's still buffering. This computer's off. Can you present for us? It should be presenting now.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Aguilard, coming in the clutch right there. So tonight, we want to recognize our FFA students who competed in the South Texas Agricultural Roundup. We'll start off with students from West Loco East High School. In the first slide, we have Christian Cromer, first place in class and breed champion for market lamb. William Cromer, first in class and reserve breed champion, market lamb. And Brendan Cromer, all three brothers, reserve breed champion in the market lamb. Next slide, please. Parker Galvane, first in class, breeding heifer. Preston Galvane, grand champion showman, market rabbit. Star scholarship recipient, go back, we have Ethan Alejandro. He won a scholarship for $750. And also recently, a star scholarship, Parker Galvane of $1,250. Next slide, please. From West Loco High School, we have first in class market lamb, Diego Calderon. Justin Calderon, grand champion senior showman, market lamb. Cheyenne Garza, grand champion junior showman, market lamb. Christopher Ramirez, grand champion intermediate showman, market lamb. Continuing on with West Loco High School, Cora Ford, first in class champion, intermediate showman, market hog. Ella Ford, first in class, market hog, reserve breed champion, breeding gilt. Cooper Ford, first in class, reserve champion, reserve champion senior showman steer. Lily Ford, grand champion, reserve champion senior showman, breeding gilt, breed champion AOB heifer. Next slide, please. We have Nathan Parker, grand champion, reserve champion showman, market rabbit. Casey Parker, reserve champion, reserve champion showman, market rabbit. We also have Micah Parker, first in class, grand champion youth showman, market rabbit, and reserve grand champion, grand champion senior showman heifer, Kylie Selman. Star scholarship recipients are Kylie Selman. She received a $1,000 scholarship, also $1,000 Get Out Memorial Scholarship, Shining Star Duchess, a $500 scholarship. Congratulations, Kylie. Cooper Ford won a $1,250 scholarship and also the Get Out Memorial $500 scholarship. I'd also like to say congratulations to Nathan Parker, who also received a couple of scholarships, $1,250 scholarship and Get Out Memorial $500 scholarship. So congratulations to all our FFA students for their grand performance at the star. So congratulations to all our FFA students for their grand performance at the Star South Texas Agricultural Roundup. And congratulations to the sponsors as well. We have Mr. Juan Cadenha and Alonso Garza from West Laco High School. And from West Laco East High School, Mr. John Romo and Rolando Gonzalez. Congratulations, students, once again, and sponsors.
Great job, man.
Up next, we'll continue to highlight some of our students here. Tonight, we want to congratulate several students who recently auditioned for a spot in the Texas Musician Educators Association All Area, All State Band. All area covers the entire South Texas area all the way up to San Antonio, so the competition was certainly very intense. From West Laco High School, making all area, we have Antonio Sanchez on the clarinet. We have Abram Miralles on the euphonium. Then we have Fernando Benist on the percussion. From West Laco East High School, making all area band is Julia Lopez, who plays the flute. In state competition, alternate to state is from West Laco High School, Joseph Cardona in the euphonium. Next slide, please. This year, we have one student who earned a spot on the 5A All-State Band, and we want to congratulate Isabella Sanchez from West Laco East High School. Isabella submitted a live recording to a panel of judges who then ranked all students. She was selected as first chair in the trumpet. This is a tremendous accomplishment to be all-state. Because of COVID restrictions, Isabella was not able to travel to San Antonio and perform with the all-state band. However, because this talented young lady is only a sophomore, she may return next year, so look out for her. Our West Laco High School Band Director is Rodrigo Leal, and the West Laco East High School Band Director is Armando Wayad. Congratulations, students. Up next, we would like to congratulate. Next slide, please. We want to congratulate West Laco High School Junior Sarah Dominguez, who was recently elected as District Officer Vice President of DECA District One. She is a three-year DECA member and competitor who represents West Laco High School as the current DECA president. Sarah is in the top 9% of her class and also active in NHS, BPA, and the junior class. She is part of the early college program and plans to graduate with her associate's degree when she completes high school. Congratulations. We know that you will represent West Laco High School and WISD proudly. Thank you very much, and good job, Sarah. Tonight, we want to celebrate a career highlight for one of our coaches. Our West Laco High School Head Girls Basketball Coach recently celebrated her 400th win. We congratulate Griselda Fino for this special milestone. As head coach for the past 15 years, Coach Fino has led the Lady Panthers to 15 consecutive playoffs, winning nine district titles, 11 bi-district championships. The girls have also won six area titles, four regional quarterfinal championships, making four appearances in the Sweet 16 Tournament. So we congratulate tonight Coach Fino for her dedication to the sport and to her athletes. And good luck, girls, and Coach Fino. We know you have a big game later on this week as you play for a district title against PSJA. Congratulations, Coach Fino. Up next, three West Laco ISD schools were recently commended for their leadership in improving student test scores. After an extensive analysis of student data for every public school in Texas, Memorial Elementary, Clecker Hill Elementary, and Central Middle School were named to the 2019-2020 Educational Results Partnership Honor Roll. ERP examines star results from the 2018-2019 school year and compared performances among disadvantaged student groups. Memorial, Clecker Hill, and Central were among the 943 high-performance schools distinguished for closing the achievement gaps for these populations. Congratulations. Up next, we have the... Up next, we'd like to recognize our business office. The business office was recently awarded with a comprehensive annual financial report certificate, excellence in reporting. We congratulate the entire staff and administration at the business office who continue to work to ensure that district finances are in order. Business Office has been the recipient of the Texas Education Agency's Superior Rating and the Financial Integrity Ratings System of Texas Award for 18 consecutive years. So congratulations, Mr. Sanchez, and the entire business office. This month, the recipient of the A-plus award is someone who truly cares about the caregivers. As the pandemic and the subsequent shutdown continued, the well-being of our students and staff began to be affected. As the Director of the Student Support Services, this individual took proactive measures to provide her council and staff with the resources to help students and staff deal with social, emotional issues. According to her staff, she clearly demonstrates the characteristics of a great leader. Her sincere empathy and communication skills go a long way in helping our counselors provide the best support. From the District Support Services Department, we would like to congratulate Norma Brewer for being January's Employee of the Month. And that concludes our awards and recognition.
Congratulations to everyone. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, to all students and staff, great job in light of the pandemic to go out and excel the way you have and make us all proud. Great job. Item six, Proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month, February 2021. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have several proclamations. This is the first one. Mr. Roblevo, are you ready?
Yes. I'm ready to go. First of all, we'd like to recognize we do have some CTE staff members who are watching online tonight as we read this first proclamation. And this one is for Career and Technical Education Month, CTE Month. Whereas February 1st through 28, 2021, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association of Career and Technical Education. And whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. Whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement, therefore, WISD Board President Armando Wayad does hereby proclaim February 1st through the 28th, 2021, as Career and Technical Education Month. Also, on behalf of the CT Administration, as a token of their appreciation and a celebration of CTE Month, they have provided board members with a little goodie bag, and they hope that you enjoy what's inside. Up next, another proclamation to announce here, FCCA Leadership Week. Whereas Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, the National Nonprofit Student Organization for Family and Consumer Sciences Students through Grade 12, help youth assume their role in society through family and consumer sciences education in areas of personal growth, family life, vocational preparation, and community involvement. Whereas the organization spends classroom learning through chapter projects that develop leadership and initiatives that help young men and women learn how to plan, make decisions, and carry out, and evaluate programs of action as they work with other youth and adults in their school and in their community. Therefore, Armando Wayad Jr., President of the WISD Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim the week of February 8th through the 12th as FCC LA Leadership Week at WISD. Up next, a proclamation for Digital Learning Day. Whereas Digital Learning Day is an annual national and international celebration of technological and digital education in K-12 schools, where teachers and schools across the country and around the world hold local activities supporting the event, offering new and exciting ways for students to learn daily. Whereas teachers, students, and schools in Texas and across the nation are using innovation and technology to transform and improve education, therefore, Armando Wayad Jr., President of the WISD Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim February 25th, 2021, as Digital Learning Day. Social Workers Month. So for social workers, this proclamation is for you. I hope you were watching. Whereas professional social workers work on the front lines of human service delivery to help people resolve real problems. Whereas professional social workers see firsthand the insidious effects of hatred and prejudice on individuals, families, and communities, including a rise in hate crimes. Whereas professional social workers understand that crimes against individuals based on race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, political belief, or characteristic diminish the humanity of victim and predator alike. Therefore, Armando Wayad Jr., President, WISD Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim March 2021 as National Social Work Month. And I have one more, one more proclamation here for you. This is for all the dynasticians who are watching here this evening. Whereas Texas Governor Greg Abbott has proclaimed March 1st through the 5th, 2021, as Educational Dynasticians Week, to raise awareness of the important work these professionals perform every day in the Lone Star State. And whereas educational dynasticians provide important services that benefit children, parents, schools, and communities in Texas. Whereas these professionals administer and interpret tests measuring academic achievement, adaptive behavior, intelligence, language skills, and perceptual motor skills. Therefore, Armando Wayad Jr., President of the WISD Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim March 1st through the 5th, 2021, as Educational Dynasticians Week. And that concludes our proclamations.
Thank you, fellows. And again, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to each and every one of these organizations and for the work that you do and very, very deserving of the proclamations that have honored your work. So, thank you very much. Take us to item 11, public comments. I'm going to read a little something, and then I'll ask for your name and address. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, the Board of Trustees may not deliberate on any comment made by a member of the public on a subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of this meeting. As per the Texas Attorney General, the scope of board discussion for a subject not part of the meeting agenda is limited to only a proposal by a board member to place the subject on a future board agenda. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries, but the board shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board unless recognized by the presiding official. No public comment or presentation will exceed five minutes. Any disruptive behavior by any speaker may result in the speaker's removal from participation in the meeting. Please be mindful of using names or personally defiable information as there is no immunity from defamatory comments while participating in public comments. Please state your name and address.
Robert Rodriguez, 301 Padre, here in West Laco.
Thank you. Coach Saviya will keep time. At the four-minute mark, we'll let you know that you have a minute left for your presentation. You have the floor now.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Coach Wayad, and board members. My name is Robert Rodriguez. I am an employee of this district, but tonight, I'm here in my most important role, that of a father. My brilliant and beautiful daughter is a senior at West Laco High School. My purpose in calling in is this. It is imperative that we have in-person graduation. The school board and administration must do whatever it takes to ensure a real-life, in-person graduation takes place this year. Many of the conversations I've had with other senior 21 parents have centered on the idea that if the district can host football games with spectators, have other athletic events with fans in the stands, and in-person instruction, then we can certainly have graduation. We are 106 days from West Laco High School's scheduled graduation. I realize that many things can and will change until then. So is the hope of many more vaccinations for the general public. Let's be creative, open up both sides of the stadium, let's bring in extra bleachers from middle schools to increase social distancing plans. So many of the traditions and memory-creating experiences have been robbed from our senior students. Many of the end-of-the-year senior activities might be virtual or have been or possibly canceled altogether. We cannot have two years in a row of no graduation ceremonies. Let's work together. Let's plan with courage and end this school year on a positive note. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Item 12, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have several items on the Superintendent's Report this evening. We have COVID-19 updates, including presentations by two of our local physicians. Pediatric physicians, Dr. Oaks and Dr. Pathak, will hit on rapid testing and vaccinations. We'll cover first semester student academic status, and then we'll move on to student enrollment and insurance. So we will begin. Dr. Oaks, are you online? And Dr. Pathak?
Yes, this is Dr. Oaks.
Hello, Dr. Oaks. Welcome, and thank you for taking the time, to both of you, for presenting, not only to our Board of Trustees and to everybody online virtually, but to our community by means of the recording.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I'm honored. So as I was preparing for this presentation, I was trying to decide what is the most important point that I wanted to put across. And I think the most important message I want to give to the public is that of reassurance. We already have almost a year's worth of data on pediatric COVID. And that information is pretty encouraging, you know? For the vast majority of kids who get it, COVID is a mild illness. When children are exposed to COVID, they are less likely to catch it than adults. And when they do have it, at least in kids less than 10, they are not likely to transmit it. It's not that the incidence is 0%, but the likelihood of you catching COVID from a child younger than 10 years of age is around 10%, so it's very small. So this is in direct contrast with influenza, for example, where studies in the past have shown that the way the influenza spreads in the community is through the schoolchildren in the school or daycare setting. This is not the case for COVID. We already know that. I think, and in part, I think this is because children have innately a well-functioning immune system. They catch the virus, their immune system effectively kills it, and so they end up with a mild illness, and they don't really, the young kids don't really transmit it. The core problems when you have a bad case of COVID, at least in adults, is inflammation. So inflammation is the name of the game in bad cases of COVID. So in the 20% of cases in adults who end up in the hospital is because their immune system has gone haywire. Now, in kids, the closest thing that this comes to is the entity called the MISC. I'm sure you've heard of it. It stands for multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. You've heard of it. It's serious. It's like the kind of serious COVID illness you see in an adult. But what you really need to know, I think, within the public, is that it's rare. It's not very common. It's likened to this disease called Kawasaki, which, so they tell us Kawasaki, so it gives us a framework in which to think about this disease. So in my 20-plus years in pediatric medicine here in the Rio Grande Valley, I've seen two cases of Kawasaki. So that's to illustrate to you how rare, you know, something like this can be. This is also more common in kids of African descent. So I think from a practical point of view, for us living here in the valley, I would not worry about this illness too much, or at least this part of the illness. So that's the information we have on pediatric COVID in a nutshell. So what do I see in my practice? Pretty much more, pretty much, you know, what the data says. To me, to me, in my personal experience seeing kids with COVID, it looks like a generic viral illness that a child would have. You know, flu actually looks worse than COVID in kids. The flu, when the child has the flu, they are sicker, and they are sick for longer. for longer. Uh, with COVID, mo- but the vast majority of kids have it mild to moderate. It lasts one to two days, sometimes three to four. Um, they get sore throat, cold-like symptoms, stomach pain, diarrhea, headache, body ache. The worst I've seen personally might be a high fever, 102, maybe bronchiolitis, but with kind of bronchiolitis, a generic bronchiolitis that's responsive to standard treatment. You're not, nothing that a parent couldn't handle at home. The youngest patients I've seen with COVID, it's about 10 days old. I was so worried to have this patient, because, uh, I didn't know what to expect. But fortunately, she snoozed a few times, according to the mom, and that was it for her. She had five others named Lick, they had a cold, and that wa- that was it as well. I had a high-risk patient with seizure, get COVID, and that was worrisome for me as well, because, you know, we hear high risk, and they get COVID, and everybody, you know, it's, it's just very worrisome when you, you know, hear the news and, and all of this. Same thing with adults. But he too did fine. Uh, he was sick for a little bit longer, in my experience, 10 days, but he did not end up in the hospital, and he recovered uneventfully. And I've had all sorts of patients, from infants, toddlers, school-aged kids, high school, the whole gamut, the whole spectrum of pediatrics, I've seen COVID in them, and they all have done fine. Um, I was speaking with my colleague in infectious disease about his experience on high-risk patients and COVID. So you're talking about asthemics, you know, diabetic kids, kids with cancer, seizures, neuro-, you know, all, all that stuff. And I think that the message I want the community to take home is that just because a child is high-risk and they get COVID, doesn't mean automatically that they will have a bad outcome. Okay? So it's the same thing with adults, just because an adult is high-risk and they get COVID, it's not automatic that they are going to have a bad outcome. So that, that is what I want you to, you know, remember. It's, everything is very scary right now, it's very difficult to put it in context if you don't work in the medical field. Um, so, um, so the patient, in my, in my opinion, that really needs to be careful, I think, who is high-risk, is somebody who has a weak cough, a weak cough. So even generally, the neuromuscular kids, who if they get a virus, they can't cough it out, they can't expect to rate it. These, this is the category of kids that I think probably should stay home. Um, so, so to reiterate, kids are less likely to get COVID. If they get it, it's a mild illness. In kids less than 10, they don't, they don't transmit the disease. Uh, this is all good news, I think, as far as our back-to-school and back-to-the-classroom campaign goes, particularly in younger kids. Um, this is, this is why the American Academy of Pediatrics takes a strong stance urging parents to physically send their kids back to school. Uh, for a child, for a child, if you do a risk-benefit analysis, the benefits of being back to school physically far outweigh the risk of getting COVID. Uh, first and foremost, academic benefits, you know? There, there is already data that kids are falling behind. They are forgetting how to read, they're forgetting how to write, they're forgetting the stuff they, they've learned in the previous years. In some areas, the data indicates that up to 30% of kids are falling behind, it may be more in our community. So for, for a child, there are developmental, emotional, and psychological benefits to going back. I've had teenagers tell me, "Doc, I've always been like this," meaning, meaning they've had a depressive or an anxious personality, "I've always been like this." But I think if I could be with my friends, I could deal with it better. So the feelings of isolation is aggravating, you know, a mental health issue that I think would otherwise have been manageable to these older patients. Lastly, lastly, I think the school, the daycares have done a great job, you know, keeping, keeping our kids safe. We haven't had a community outbreak in these settings. So whatever we're doing in the school setting is working, and that's fantastic. But I, I want to reiterate and remind parents that they have to do their part too, you know? Sure, the school is doing a good job keeping us safe, but, but the parents have to do, we don't want to put all the burden on the school district. I urge parents who are listening to check their kids, you know, before sending, even sending them to school, and don't send them if they're sick. Um, it will take all of us in the community doing our, our small part to make this all work, and also to keep the pandemic in check in our community. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Dr. Oaks. Dr. Pathak?
Uh, Dr. Canales, excuse me, it's Dr. Oaks again, and I, I got a text from Dr. Pathak, that he had a webinar, that he had a webinar elsewhere for 7:00 PM. That may be why he's not responding.
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Oaks. Vaccinations and com-
Can you hear me?
Oh, he's on, he's on, yay, we can hear you, Dr. Pathak, yes. Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, it was a technical glitch, uh, I, um, tried to do my best, but I had to call help here. Uh, just to, uh, let you know that, uh, I'm, Dr. Pathak, I'm here in, uh, Westlaco for the last 23 years. I'm a general pediatrician, and I want to thank you for inviting me. And, uh, I was listening to Dr. Oaks, she, uh, did it very beautifully and summarized it, uh, very well. I really don't want to be going over, uh, whatever she has already, uh, talked about. Uh, I will probably be, um, talking more on, uh, on the rapid test and on the vaccination part of it. Uh, like, um, she was mentioning, uh, kids don't get it as serious or as bad as the adults sometimes can get it. Uh, the reason for that is that there is a receptor which does not develop till you are 18 to 20 years of age, which is present in your mucus membranes, as well as in the blood vessels inside, which is the cause of majority of the inflammatory process, and the seriousness of the illness is, uh, more in the patients who have comorbid condition because of the same reason. And kids don't have it, so they may not get sick from it, but they can still spread to others. Uh, coming to the, to the le- uh, rapid testing, there are, uh, two types of tests we, we are doing. One is the, the rapid test, which, uh, I was talking to Dr. Canales, uh, you are doing it in the school. Uh, first of all, um, the sensitivity of that test is not very high. Um, it can miss, um, as per one of the studies, you know, they were saying that 45% of the times, uh, the kids who did not have symptom or, uh, even the ones who had symptoms, they were missed on the test. And contrary to that, uh, you know, they were, uh, like 45% of, of the other kids who had symptoms and it came out negative. And, uh, the test checks the antigens, uh, which is, uh, going to be, uh, I guess reported within 15 minutes if you do it in the school. It should be voluntary, number one. And then if you have to confirm it, there is going to be another test, which is a PCR test, which, uh, basically is a sophisticated test and cannot be done, um, in, um, a setup like, like schools. Uh, but, uh, it is done in the hospitals and in the labs. Uh, our lab happens to be doing both the rapid as well as the PCR tests. And PCR test happens to be very, very sensitive, it's almost like 99.9% accurate in, uh, checking, and if there is a strong suspicion, uh, that the test is, uh, rapid test is negative, and still, uh, you want to know whether it's, uh, actually there or not, so it is to be confirmed with the, with the PCR test. And then there is a third test which is done, uh, which is known as serological test, which basically checks your antibodies, you know? Once you get infected, your body generates a response in, uh, in terms of immunoglobulin, which is known as antibody. And this is going to tell you whether, uh, the antibodies are positive, so you have been exposed to the infection. Uh, and it's kind of a more of, uh, of a qualitative thing, uh, not as much, uh, uh, the quantitative. And, uh, then coming to, uh, the kids, especially because you are dealing with the, uh, school kids, uh, there are, uh, going to be, uh, lot of, uh, things which we can do, uh, and since kids are not a high-risk category, they can still be, uh, screened if there are symptoms, and, uh, monitored for signs and symptoms, and, uh, all the, the mask, social distancing, hand washing, uh, airflow, uh, try to have the classes, uh, possible, uh, with the doors open, windows open, or in the outdoor areas, uh, which probably will, uh, limit the spread, like one of the mitigation, uh, measures. And then, uh, having, uh, face masks after the age of, uh, two years of age, and then parents, uh, they should report right away, uh, and not send the kids to the school. Guidelines unfortunately keep changing. The first time, when, uh, we barely came to know CDC had a guideline of, uh, quarantine for 14 days, uh, but later on, uh, it was reduced. I was looking in the TEA, uh, uh, news bulletin of December, uh, to 10 days if you have been exposed, uh, to a positive person, and, uh, without testing, you have to be quarantining for 10 days, and if the test is negative within seven days, uh, then, uh, that's seven days quarantine is required. And, um, I had my youngest, uh, kids, you know, in my practice, uh, they were five days old, and they were twins, and the babysitter was positive, and she was taking care of them, and, uh, and unfortunately, all the kids, you know, which we have seen in our practice, they were, uh, in last six, seven months, 100-plus positive, and none of them required hospitalization, and all the common, uh, supportive measures, including staying at home and taking care of them with, uh, with the medicine supportive, Tylenol congestion medicine worked really well, and there was no adverse outcome. And, uh, then coming to the vaccination, uh, which is, uh, a blessing, uh, so we can hope our life is going to be, uh, pre-COVID again, uh, after, uh, we have, uh, maybe, um, till June, July, um, majority of, like 50% plus, uh, of the, of the high-risk, uh, population will be vaccinated. There are two types of vaccine, as you all are aware of. Uh, one is the Pfizer vaccine, which, uh, is the first one to get approved, and, uh, it requires, uh, a temperature maintenance, uh, which is kind of a little difficult, uh, but, uh, it's, uh, two doses, three weeks apart, and it is very, very effective. Uh, it's covering like 90 to 95% of the, uh, uh, patients, you know, to get, uh, the protection to them. And then we have another one, which is Moderna, uh, which are, uh, two doses, four weeks apart, and, uh, they don't have as stringent requirements, uh, refrigeration, uh, is probably to be all which is going to be required, and they are widely available now, even though we still have little difficulty as far as, uh, getting even to even our elderly and high-risk, uh, patients, because there are so many, uh, people, uh, who need it, and, uh, logistically, and, uh, from standpoint of, uh, getting it all done very quickly requires a lot of organization. It's getting better, and, uh, actually, uh, we are doing very, uh, well in last one week, uh, it's been more than a million, uh, vaccination every day. So, uh, looks like there is, uh, a light at that, you know, and we all can hope this will be pretty soon, uh, behind us. And, um, there are a couple of more vaccines coming, uh, which are, uh, in the pipeline, but they have not been approved yet, uh, but in the process of emergency approval, one being Estrogenica, uh, that has only one dose, I believe, and it's, uh, um, uh, efficacy-wise, it's about 65%, which is not bad for the vaccination. Like flu also, uh, is effective 50% of the times, 50 to 60% of times, so anything more than 50 is good enough. Um, so, uh, I, I hope, you know, um, the vaccination and all the education, uh, we have about this, uh, we should be pretty soon back to normal, and, uh, schools will be in person, uh, coming with the new session. Uh, but, uh, if there is anything as far as, uh, awareness about the disease or any, uh, uh, thing else we can contribute, we'll be more than happy to. Uh, with that, I will conclude my, uh, short presentation, and thank you for inviting me to your, uh, group. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Pathak. And Dr. Oaks, and just, uh, and another side note, uh, both, uh, have, uh, very, very kind and agreed to be partners with Westwaisd and talking to me about the, um, COVID-19, its impact on children and schools. I even invited them, uh, Ms. Dr. Oaks, I extend this invitation to you too, Dr. Pathak, to accompany me to visit campuses.
That, thanks a lot for inviting me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Dr. Canales.
So, um, for the next item on the report, a little bit more about rapid, rapid testing, just want to show some pictures of what's been, uh, going on in our schools. Um, so, let's take a lot of you. Forward the slide, this is the COVID-19 data, to the rapid testing training that happened in our path. I'd like to thank all our nurses, uh, and administrators, uh, who receive training on how to conduct and help out with the rapid testing if there's ever a need. Ms. Klaftman has done a tremendous job, uh, with her wonderful, um, staff at our campuses. Next slide. Uh, here's, we do have two videos, uh, or the videos on, uh, the both accurative testing that were offered at the stadium, Monday through Friday during business, work, regular business hours, and the rapid testing on our campuses. Next slide. If you can see from the next slide, we do have a kiosk, so a big shout-out to our maintenance department, our, you know, for those who worked on constructing, uh, the kiosks, they're being used, they're very safe, uh, there's little slots on the bottom, it's kind of like a movie ticket, except there's no movie, it's only you conducting your, the test for yourself, uh, on this. So great job to everybody who worked on those. They're on a wheel, so we can roll them to where we needed. We usually do this outdoors, is where we do it, because we think it's safer. Next slide. Uh, oh, there's me. I took the test again on Friday. I took the test again on Friday, I hurt myself, I stuck it in a little bit too deep, it went ouch, but I did, I was negative, so just went for the high school, wonderful high school staff at West Cal High School, thank you for having me, and so did Dr. Garcia. Next slide. The testing locations for the rapid testing, they're at every single one of our campuses now. Next slide. Next slide. And just about the rapid testing, the times people sign up for it on Fridays, we are testing on Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. This week, I believe we're testing also on Friday because of the extended weekend on campus. Next slide. And we can test staff every two weeks. I want to talk about our vaccinations, there's a shout out to the entire district, Board of Trustees, many of you stopped by, thank you so much, our nurses were involved, this was led by our county and our city, and then West Cal YSD, our nursing staff again was there to help administer the vaccinations. We're very proud of that effort. I believe that was about a thousand vaccinations that were conducted on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. So thank you again to the entire district for this efforts on rapid testing and vaccinations. Okay, a little bit on, on the next topic, Board of Trustees, I don't know if you have any questions about any of the information that we shared on that? Do you have Ms. Kaufman on the line and Dr. Garcia? If not, we'll move on to COVID-19 and the impact on academics that you heard Dr. Oaks allude to a little bit earlier. So what you see before us, and I'm having trouble seeing him, Ms. Aguilat, I'm going to need you to report out. I still need new glasses.
I just wanted to give you a breakdown of some data that we have here for students that are currently failing two or more core classes. We have a combination of the third, six weeks and semester one averages. And the reason we have it broken down in that manner is because for the elementary, we don't have semester averages, but we do have them for middle school students who take high school classes, and of course, our high school students. I do want to commend our campus administrators, all our teachers, all our staff, because through this process, they've been resilient and they've been adaptable to the instruction and everything that we're doing for our students, day in and day out. And one thing that we want to focus on, even though we have some data here, we want to focus on the strengths and not the deficits moving forward on what we're looking at. But what you see here before you is you have some columns, if you look at the blue on the twenty, twenty percent failed two-plus core, this was our percentage pre-COVID back in the third, six weeks of last year, so it was around this time. What you see to your far right in the shade of red is the COVID slide. That's data with the COVID slide. Now I want to go back to some of the comments that Dr. Oaks did share, that she made a comment that she's seen up to about thirty percent, well she was very close to that, on the comment that she made with learning loss that we're tending to see within, within our schools. So if we're looking at the third, six weeks, now we don't have pre-K and Kinder because of the letter grades and we didn't want to skew the data, this is numerical value that, numbers that we have in front of you. So we're looking, let me use an example right there. If you're looking at second grade, grade two, in twenty-twenty, last year we had one thousand two hundred and eighteen students. Last year we had a hundred and thirty-seven of them that were failing two or more core subject areas, which equated to eleven percent. Fast forward to twenty-twenty-one, we have one thousand one hundred and twenty-five students, a hundred and ninety-three of those are failing two or more core subject areas, which is a slide of seventeen percent. So which gives you a differential of six percent that we're seeing in grade two. So what I did was I went ahead and highlighted the shade of red if they had over ten percent of the differential in the learning loss. And you see that through some of the grade levels. So one of the, some of the things that we're looking at, the research will state and some of the data that you're looking at, is that our hardest-hit content area is going to be your math, because it's very abstract, it's very sophisticated, you're looking at a lot of fractions, division, building upon the grade level, so that tends to be a challenge everywhere with the math, and the research will state that as well. But we're looking at where we're transitioning from grades, if we're going from fifth to sixth, if we're going from eighth to ninth, we're noticing some gaps. So if we're looking from third, six weeks all the way to twelfth, you're looking at an average of anywhere about twenty-four percent of, of the two or more core subject areas during the COVID period versus about thirteen percent last year. So you see an increase there roughly about eleven percent from last year, twelve percent, that we're looking at an increase in, in the, in failing two or more core subject areas. So that was for the third, six weeks. If you look at the bottom, you're seeing the sixth through the twelfth, first semester, so we're getting the average of the first three, six weeks. And it's very similar, we went back, because we saw some of the similar numbers, went back with P E M S and they double-checked it. And of course, if they were failing two or more, the patterns were very similar. So again, that was equating about twenty-five percent that we were seeing as far as the loss compared to the thirteen percent that we had pre-COVID, which gives us roughly about a twelve percent average. Now, we're noticing on some of the grade levels, they are a little higher, we're, we're working to address those areas, we're identifying those needs. We want to build some more on grade level versus remediation, because some of the research will say that's not always going to work, so we want to build upon that. We want to continue building those relationships with our students. And I know our teachers do a wonderful job and our campuses do a wonderful job with that. And we want to continue focusing and center on, center, center on the social, emotional aspect of it and leveraging our technology, instruction to continue building upon this. We've been having some very good discussions with our campus administrators, with a lot of teams, our central office strategists and how we're going to be tackling this moving forward and what we're going to be looking at down the road. But here's some data in front of you, if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
The, the big concern here is obviously, you know, the difference between the third, six weeks and first semester. Your first semester, you, you fail, the second semester, you don't get a credit. So right now, we have, you know, for instance, in, in grade six, and it's very small print, but three hundred and forty-eight that failed, those are kids that are not receiving that half a credit, correct?
That is correct. So we're looking at some of the content areas going back, Mr. Trevino, we're going back precisely to identify those and we're working with our campus principals to see what we can do. The majority of the concerns that are coming up is with that engagement piece, trying to get the students to engage online. So we're tackling a lot of those scenarios through home visits. We've really gone out there to try to get them to log on, they're not logging on, anything that we can do to provide that assistance at home, if not to try to bring them on campus. So we have a robust effort through our district and through the campuses to try to remediate that and move forward with that and assist, assist our students.
When we walked through the campuses back a couple of months ago, the teachers are, of course, working on their computer, teaching remotely, but also have kids in front of them, those kids who do choose to go face-to-face, they're still teaching remotely on the computer. So let's say, you know, these, we can get these kids who are failing to go back to school. Would a teacher who does have those kids who are failing in her classroom, would she be able to teach face-to-face? And then what would happen to those kids who are looking through the computer remotely? Is there a way, what I'm asking, is it, is there a way where, when teachers are going to start teaching face-to-face? And how would they, you know, how would they do the computer thing?
Very good question, Mrs. Stait, thank you for asking, and those are discussions that we're currently having. And TA has come up with different models and recommendations when it comes to split staffing, split scheduling, concurrent instruction. And we've gone in through different discussions with our campus administrators, central office staff, gathered a lot of feedback, see what would be our best route. Campus administrators also took that back to their campus teams to discuss what would be the best interest. First and foremost, right now, students that we have on campus, we're following the CDC guidelines to ensure that safety is priority, that's what we're doing first. So we're looking at several different scenarios on how we're going to be tackling that, and that's some of the discussions that we're currently having, because we know it's a concern and we know it's something that we want to try to find what's the best option for our students, and we're working through that as we're moving forward. Very good question.
Mr. Aguilat, my, my only recommendation is that, you know, from looking at some of these numbers, even it's almost doubled on some of these, we're almost to the end of the four, six weeks, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct, sir.
And, you know, if we continue with this momentum or this, this pattern here, we're gonna, we're gonna have a substantial amount of kids failing for the school year, not just for a semester. So I mean, I know that's a, a, a big task for you guys to, to, but I think this is something that we, we, obviously you couldn't have done it without the data, but something that we need to do like very, very soon.
Yes, sir.
You know, because this is, this is alarming, this is a, a big number.
Correct. And, and going back, I know it's a, and we hear it everywhere, and I know the president just, you know, mentioned that it's a national crisis that we're seeing, you know, everywhere. And it is a concern, we do speak with other colleagues in other districts and they're experiencing similar scenarios and the concerns that are taking place. You know, I can assure you that our campus administrators or teachers are, are on top of it and they're working.
Yes, oh, yes.
And, and we're trying to do the best that we can, and we're not going to, we're not going to make excuses on deficits, we're going to focus on the strengths. We're going to continue doing that and see what we can do to address that. We do have our plans for, for our seniors, we have our, our plans, we're working, we're meeting every two weeks, and we're tracking them, because we want to make sure that they all graduate. We have plans for all our students, we do follow up with our campus administrators, counselors, we do what we need to do. But that's been the big, greatest challenge that we currently face right now is that engagement, not due to lack of devices or hotspots or anything, it's trying to get them engaged. And so that we've, we've created that strong effort to have those home visits and follow through with that and try to get the parents engaged as best as we can, try to identify those root causes why they're not logging on.
Yes.
And try to figure out what it is so we can do it to provide those services and support that our students desperately need. And, and we are working towards that every day and, and, and we're working at it, you know, so yes, the concerns are there.
Yes, sir. I, I know it'll help, and I know Mr. Stait, that mentioned, we visited campuses, and campuses, you know, the ones we visited are safe. Schools, schools are the safest locations, you know, across the, probably the state of Texas, schools are safe. So, you know, I think the more the parents hear that, the more they will be prone to allow their kids to, to go back to school.
Yes, sir.
And this, I mean, that, that'll help this instantly.
Yes, sir. And we're currently right now trying to leverage all our resources to try to have more of that face-to-face, and we've had those discussions with our campus administrators and central office staff to start seeking out, you know, different systems and processes to try to bring that in, in a safe and orderly manner, where we can provide those resources and support for our students. So we are looking at multiple, you know, options of what we're going to be doing moving forward with that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Aguilat?
Yes.
We don't want to prepare for failure, but it's going to be inevitable in some cases, because it happens every year. Is there a plan in place for summer school, for students who don't make it, to be able to recover what they might have missed? And what's it look like?
Yes, sir. So very good question, President Quay. Well, we've been in discussions with this, and Dr. Canales has also led the discussions with us moving forward, along with our principals. We look very closely at our board policy on what we have for promotion and retention, and that's something that we're also been in discussions with these last few months as we're monitoring the instruction and how we're going to be tackling this moving forward, because we can already see that if we continue this trend, it is going to increase the number of possible retainees. So we want to make sure that our summer school is going to be effective and it's going to focus on what we need to focus and, and target the needs of our students. So we're going to be monitoring that, we're going to continue our discussions, not only with our campus administrators, but our key teachers on campus to gather more feedback and try to see what's going to be the best course of action moving forward.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This may, maybe answered it earlier, but grade recovery interventions, those are being offered at all grade levels, so that way the parents know that, that principals or teachers are allowing students to go back and maybe make up assignments that they missed. I know that in, in the system, the way they have it, you can go in there and you can see your child missing assignments. So, so those, so once you all make contact with the parents through your different avenues, different resources you're using, we're making them aware that they can go back in there and, and provide that. Is that part of the interventions for grade recovery?
So what we're doing is we have that flexibility piece, and that's one thing that we've been discussing quite a bit with our administrators, is we have to have that flexibility and work with our parents. For example, we don't follow, we're not too stringent with, when a parent says, well, you know, my child's only going to be remote, but now I want to send them, send them. If we can get them in, let's bring them in.
Right.
So we're recruiting them, we're bringing them in, that's why our numbers are going up on campus, because our, our goal is to get them engaged and our goal is to get them learning. So yes, we do submit the surveys to better prepare, but our doors are open. And that's one thing that we stress to all our families, to our principals, to our staff, our doors are open at all times, because we want to make sure that we service the needs of our students and we maintain that flexibility for instruction to help them. We want our children to be successful, so whatever we can do to help them, then we'll work through that.
So just to add.
Go on. This is, I guess, for you and, and Ms. Aguilat. In going back to Mrs. Stait's question, right, because my kids have been there since the thirtieth. And I don't understand, for those teachers that we do have on campus, and I understand they're back now, however, if a grade level only has, let's say, ten kids tops, in following CDC guidelines, why can't we, especially like you look at grades two through five that are really struggling, put those kids in with one teacher that does true face-to-face teaching, and maybe that other teacher pick up her students that aren't, that are doing the remote learning? So has some of these kids get the benefit of that face-to-face with, with some of our teachers? Now, I know our teachers are afraid, I get it, I understand, but like Mr. Trevino said, our, our schools are probably some of the safest places our kids can be, including staff. And so I, I know we're trying to, you know, go along with the CDC guidelines, but I think we could have some sort of face-to-face teaching and if, if, I mean, right now, it really doesn't matter who your homeroom teacher is, at, at least I don't think, if it's all remote. But if, if we have our teachers, now that they're there, our students that are there in any of our campus, hey, you know what, these students this week, they're going to go with you next week with somebody else, if it becomes a rotational deal, but some way or another, we have to engage our kids. I, I've seen it with mine, they struggle, and mine are there at school, you know, every day, and they still struggle. You know, not having that, that face-to-face. I have one that's taking Spanish and is in La La Land, because he's like, Dad, I need your help. You know, because there's not that one-on-one communication, and when you only, when you talk to them about a different language, well, it's harder. These kids grew up in a different time period than, than we did. And, and so I'm not just saying about mine, but just in general, our teachers are back. Find those kids, get them into one of the classrooms, hey, here's your face-to-face learning, and that'll get us.
Yeah, we saw that, Mr. Devine, we saw that when we visited one of the middle schools, and the teacher proudly recognized a student who had, who, who just could not find a way to engage remotely. So the parent decided to send the student to school. And even though they didn't see every single teacher, every single day, they were with a, with a teacher for a period of, well, maybe every other day they saw the teacher. And in the points, they weren't going from class to class to class, but they were with a live teacher, and the teacher said, this student has gone from failing to like getting an A now on exams. So it is about, it is about engagement. I mean, our teachers are doing a great job, whether it's a hybrid or whether it's a stagger, they're doing a great job. We know that this is the time of the year when we're usually spending time on instruction, interventions and acceleration to prepare for the star. We're working on that. Our summer school, we know it has to be different. Our goals are still the same, student success, you know, not only with a literacy focus, but the numeracy, numeracy focus as well, and just to focus on academics and learning. What, what we are going to have to do differently as a district, and it's not just our district, it's districts across the nation, our goals are true north. I mean, we all believe in them, we all want success for every single student beyond West Cal YSD. So it's the little means of how we're going to get there that has to change a little bit. I send a personal invitation to every single one of our students and their parents to engage. When you engage, even it's remote, with our teachers, you're going to soar. And if you can't engage and, and that learning style is not for you to be at home, you know, day after day by yourself in a room, our schools will continue to be saying, we'll work hard on that. We need everybody playing their part by not showing up that they have symptoms, and you know, we will help children soar. I know our students can learn, and I think that part of the data that you're seeing, it's not that that you're seeing, it's not that they can't learn, and it may not even be that they don't know. It's just that they're not completing assignments. So, you know, we're 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 in it to win it for children. We'll work on intervention plans. We'll refine them, the credit recovery, the credit accrual programs, the summer programs, acceleration, the small group with teachers, you know, even if it's virtually, we'll work on that. Because this data does not reflect the hard work of our teachers and our administrators and even our parents. And it does not reflect what our students know and are able to show that they know.
Yes, no. Thank you for sharing that, Doctor. And I that's what I wanted to finish with. I know this is these these uh this information, this data here is not an indication of the type of teachers, administration, schools we have. Obviously, last, I mean, we've excelled, and we're doing very well. So but I what Mr. Aguilar mentioned, we need to figure out how to, and I know some of the kids aren't, you knock on doors and they're not opening the doors, you know. Those are the ones that we need that are that are affecting this data right here, not the ones that are there. But, you know, I've also heard from 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 parents, we send our kids, don't, and this goes along uh what what uh Mr. Gonzalez said, we send our kids, and they're sitting there staring in into a uh into a cardboard or whatever. You know, that's where it lacks that interaction. And, you know, I I I know you guys will figure it out, and I know it's going to be a trial and error, but I know we're losing ground here with this four, six weeks.
Very strong, very strong points, uh, Mr. Thiruvind. Thank you for sharing that. And uh, just so you know, we are, we are already receiving proposals from our uh campus principals right now for that face-to-face option to provide a lot of the support and remediation. So we are looking at different options outside of the regular day. Now, when we came back, we were having that transition, and due to the ransom order attack, you know, we've been out since the first week of December. So we just transitioned back today. And, you know, kudos to Carlos Martinez and his technology team, as well as our campuses. Uh, they did a wonderful job making sure that all our teachers would still continue with teaching and learning today. Few minor glitches, but we had a very good, strong, productive day. But we're going to continue evaluating, looking at our systems and processes, see what we can do to improve, and make sure that we have, we keep our staff safe and our students safe, you know, at all costs. And that's one thing that we want to make sure that we do. But by by all means, you know, we take all the recommendations, all the comments, and we're open to a lot of suggestions from everyone within our district, because we want to do what's best for students.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Gonzalez, um, when we talked under the under the superintendent's report, having our pediatricians, our medical professionals come in for the community and present and give us uh data, uh, up-to-date data, um, showing the the effects that COVID-19 has has had on the academics and with the distance learning, um, all these, all these, all the more information we put out to the community, to families, um, like like trustee Guzales was saying, or or schools are one of the are probably, and and the trustee Laviño was saying, the schools are ranked as one of the safest places, even through CDC, Dr. Fauci, et cetera, even in the country, uh, because of the policies and the guidelines, the social distancing, the mask wearing, the etiquette, the procedures that are in place. And and what I wanted to say, where I'm going with this, is that also in our marketing that the district does, we have to show parents what the inside of the school looks like. Yeah, I know that we already have some videos out there that are very good that show our maintenance staff and and all our different departments, transportation, nutrition, et cetera, and everything that they're doing to go above and beyond to keep the environment safe as possible. But also showing the classrooms now to our to our to our parents in the community, I think that'll help a lot as well. Um, and uh, that's just something that maybe can be taken into account. It is actually like as you're going to do walkthroughs with the local uh medical professionals that we have, we can also do some videos to show parents, to show them there are classrooms, the social distancing, and all the guidelines and whatnot. Um, because that's one thing that I didn't get to ask. I want to ask our medical professionals, because there is, there are things that are categorized as super-spreader sites or super-spreader events by the CDC, medical research that's out there over the years. And 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 like Dr. Fauci said, the CDC has also put out there compared to barber shops, salons, restaurants, et cetera, uh, department stores, supermarkets, things like that, that are considered super-spreader sites or social gatherings, uh, that are super-spreader events. Uh, schools rank as one of the safest compared to those categories. And and so I think the more information and and that we give and the research that's now out there, you know, it'll kind of help in recruiting some of these kids that need to come back. Maybe they they won't learn uh through distance learning, and they can come on on site. There's something to consider.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, Mr. De La Santos. I I almost got my daughters to go this week. I was kind of like, come on, you guys can go back to school. It's okay. But the fear of the unknown, but I don't know how it looks. But but what am I who am I going to where am I going to sit? They were almost wanting to go back for them at the very last minute. No, 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 I I don't want to forget it. Forget it. I wanted to, but I don't know how it looks. So you're right. We can just put out the the pictures.
Right.
I know some schools have the web, the Facebook, the website, you know, a lot of them, social media is super, super powerful. Um, so that's what I was going to say also. And as a parent, I'm just reaching out to the parents if you're watching. If your child is struggling, I know sometimes it's hard to get them to sit and and pay attention, or even if they're not, and they just need the engagement. The schools looked very safe, and I wouldn't be saying this if I didn't feel it as a mother walking myself to the schools. You if you're if you think you need it, if you think your child needs it, the schools are safe, send them back. And the and the teachers, a lot of them say, but I don't feel safe. I'm I'm an adult. It's different for the adults. And I just want, hopefully, the teachers who are listening to the doctors to also feel safe, because the the kids, you know, if they are sick, hopefully, they're not showing up, and we need everybody's part in this. Parents, don't send them to school if anything, even if it's a stomach ache, and you think, oh, well, it was just because they ate something bad. We just don't know with this virus what it was. So just keep keep them home if if they're feeling sick, and and we need everybody's part. But if schools are really safe, I agree.
Any other questions regarding the data? Thank you for the comments and recommendations.
So moving on, uh, student enrollment, that's the next slide. Just on campus attendance, uh, this was the, I'm sorry, this was the attendance for last week. So it did range from uh 1161 on the Monday to 1,029 on Friday. Today, we were over 1,200 students on campuses today. Next slide. For enrollment, we compare um 2019 to 20 uh 2020 to 2021 school years for enrollment. You can see the difference in enrollment for a total of 638. So we're still short. ADA, um, we in 2020 at this time, um, we were at in 2020, we were at 15,176. Our ADA for this year is above that at, is that 15,000? It's 18,000. 15,397. So in 2020, we were at 96.47, and in 2021, it's 94.98%. We'll have to check these numbers for the trustees. And if there is any change in that, because that 18,000 is not incorrect, we'll send it in the board update on it. So we apologize for that. Uh, here it is again. It's 638. This is gives you by campus. You can see the differences by campus. We do have Westco High School who's up 79, and uh Westco East High School is up 33 from the same time last year. Next slide. And this slide, I'll turn it over to Mr. De La Rosa for our self-funded employee benefit plan. Mr. De La Rosa.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. This is the standard health insurance slide that we present every month. I'm going to approximate the numbers just to save time. And we always do a two-year comparison. Um, so this this data is reflective as of January 31st, 2021. So as far as medical claims, last year, the district paid $4.2 million versus this year, just a little over $5 million. That's an increase of approximately $833,000. Uh, prescription drug uh prices or costs last year, that $1.9 million versus this year at 2.7. That's again, an increase of approximately 200, I'm sorry, $827,000. Fixed costs, which is the cost we pay for administrative fees and stop-loss insurance, last year were a little over $921,000. This year, we're at just over $1 million in administrative costs and approximately $172,000 increase. So total for the year up through January 31st is a little over $7 million last year versus $8.8 million. That's a 33% increase over last year. Uh, those numbers are net of stop-loss claims. So we received, you know, $1.4 million in stop-loss uh credits or reimbursements from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Specifically in the month of January, we received just a little over $600,000 in stop-loss credits, if you will. So uh, the claims we've seen, uh, was, you know, quite an increase. I can attest for some of that in a couple of slides that I'll get through here later on. Uh, the prescription drugs costs, they are rising. Um, we're we're definitely keeping an eye on it. So uh, we'll probably talk to the board about having a workshop within the next few months about exploring some options to try and remedy uh some of this cost. Um, right now, there's over, you know, 12 members that have prescription drugs that are well over $15,000 a month. Uh, we have over 100 members, uh, their drug costs are are $1,000 a month. And um, and there's some quite significant cost, if you will, there. So there's things that we can do, such as overseas pharmacy programs that uh we'll bring to the board here in a workshop at a later date to discuss that.
Yeah, if I could have the next slide, please. So this is a COVID-19 total case count. This data is as of as of yesterday. This is the number of uh members of the plan that have been diagnosed um with COVID or have been treated. So right now, that's 284 members. And that includes employees, uh, children, and dependents on the plan. So as you can see, that number is just steadily rising since they started tracking it in January of 2020. Um, looks like we got our first case back in February, um, through the insurance. So just a little reference from the board. Uh, the next slide is is an executive dashboard of COVID-19 expenses. This data is current as of December 31st. Okay. Uh, they're promising to get me updated data that I should be able to um uh present to the board, hopefully, next month. So as of December 30th, uh, there was 230 cases with a population of 3,516. That's not just employees, that's dependents on the plan as well, children uh and spouses. Um, so again, we're at a prevalence rate about 6.54%, a little bit higher than the national uh rate at 6.10. So a little bit about testing, again, as of December 31st, there were 1,086 members tested. Um, the percentage of uh members that tested positive is 19.8%. Um, and it gives a little bit number of 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 the little bit of test information, including the average cost of test, the cost of test administered was 60, approximately $67 per test. So as of December 31st, uh, the district spent approximately $162,000 in testing. So total paid for treatment through December 31st, uh, the district incurred $660,937. Uh, that's an average of $3,479 uh per case treatment. And as you can tell, the majority of the expenses were inpatient uh facilities um versus outpatient, and then of course, professional, which is your standard uh office visit. And that concludes my report. If the board has any questions.
I have a question, Mr. De La Rosa. I'm still trying to go back to the last meeting I had, and I was trying to get clarification. The rapid tests that are administered to the athletes, let's say that their parent is a a staff member of the KAWISD. Uh, we had said that this is a self-funded uh insurance. So those parents who are receiving those, well, the insurance is paying uh those bills, correct?
Correct.
We're getting them from two different physicians, I think, very different uh bills, by the way. So this money is coming out of the Westco KAWISD balance with with those tests that are being given to the the people who are children of of staff members?
If they're on the health plan, then the then the self-insurance, health insurance pays that cost, yes.
Okay. That was my question. Because I so then, I don't know, will the TEA test that we have, the rapid test, is it different from the test that they're getting as athletes? Or can this uh substitute the one that they're getting with with the physicians?
I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend that. Uh, the the Abbott testing that's going on at the campuses, um, that is only a screening. So as as the physician previously mentioned before, it's not very accurate. Uh, it's only intended to screen. So if that uh screening would come out positive, uh, you would have to go back and get a PCR test or or an antigen test uh for greater to to have a, you know, better information or higher positive confirmation rate, if you will.
Okay.
So the tests that that they give the athletes uh are more detailed, more accurate.
So they're different tests? They're not the same?
They're different tests, correct.
Is there a reason why the bills are so different?
Um, I'm not sure what you're referring to, Mrs. Staita, as far as the bill.
The physician bills? Well, I I have some, um, I think I believe I shared with you some some bills that were brought up. Is is it supposed to be the same, like, standard test, or are they different tests, or the billing is different between the two physicians?
Well, the billing, they run through the Blue Cross and Blue Shield network. So if they're being charged through our health insurance, so they're paying what the contracted rate is with Blue Cross is. So in this case, as the price for test is, Blue Cross is telling me that's $66.98 per test. Uh, so whether that's an antigen or a PCR, I'd have to go back and and dig through that, or the rapid antigen. Um, but if they're contracted through Blue Cross and Blue Shield, then they're paying, it should be exactly the same.
Okay. Maybe we can look into that, because there was some, there were some differences in there.
And I haven't seen any bills from any any of the local docs. Um, as far as who's doing the athletic testing, that all goes through our insurance. Um, but we can take a look at that and see what the differences.
Rosa.
Yes, sir.
If, when you look into the differences uh between the two schools, I know Westco High has more student athletes. So could that be also a reasoning as to why the bills? Oh, personally. All right, Mike.
Yeah. I, yeah, Mrs., I believe the last time you asked Mrs. Mrs. Staita, that was a a different type of of claim. Um, but I could discuss that with you.
Yeah, we can look at it later.
The the reimbursement, uh, Mr. De La Rosa, should be the same either way, right? I mean, the provider can bill whatever they want to bill, but the reimbursement is going to be, it should be the same if they're contracting.
The provider could bill $1,000 and Blue Cross is going to say, no, our contract rate is the $70 or $66, and that's all they'll pay.
Right. And they're not, they're not, uh, there's no balanced billing, correct?
No, right now, with the with the emergency health order, um, there is no balanced billing, no matter what insurance you have. So until that emergence, the emergency order was just extended. And as if you recall, there was an action item that the board approved that would um amend our health plan to not have any balanced billing for testing. Uh, but right, or just right shortly after that happened, the federal government extended the health emergency to, I believe, sometime in the middle of April. So that's a federal mandate that there's no balanced billing for testing.
Thank you.
So, uh, President Quay, that concludes the superintendent's report. If there are no other questions.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item 13, consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the items there? Okay, I'm going to ask each of you, anything you want to pull? Mrs. Staita?
No, nothing.
None? Mr. Gonzalez?
None, Coach. Thank you.
Dr. Jaime?
No, sir.
I have none. Mr. Laviño?
No, sir.
Mr. Nieto?
None.
Mr. De La Santos?
None.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve?
Hi, you know what? I do have a question on the approval of budget amendments.
Budget amendment?
Yes, that would be item uh E, 13E.
Is it all of it, Coach?
No, it's down on number one and number two on the on the transfer, on the state bilingual fund. Uh, my question was.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item E, number one and four.
One and two down at the bottom.
One and two.
Yes.
Uh, bi- bilingual department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'd be four. Item one and four? Okay, that'd be four, item one and four?
Uh, one and two, sorry, bilingual and CCMR.
Yes, those are the ones I have a question about.
Okay, Andrew, what was your motion again?
To approve the consent agenda except for item, to pull items, uh?
One and four.
One and two on letter E.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, Mr. Gonzalez, and a second by Mr. Nieto?
Yes, sir.
To approve the consent agenda except for E, items one and two, correct? Let's, uh, bring it to a vote and signify your approval by saying aye. Mrs. Sutaita?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Miss, Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Post Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. LoSantos?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now we go back to the, uh, item E.
Uh, my question, I'm looking at the approval of budget amendments and I'm looking on page four. Page four for the state bilingual. Current budget amount was 55,402. Is that, my question when I was looking over this, is that what was budgeted for that? And then we have an increase of 69,920?
Mr. Trevino, the budget 55,402 is the budget for that line item, that account.
Uh, what was that on this?
That, that line, if you see to the very left, says 165, 13, 6299, 00, 871, 125. That account number, that is the budget that it has. So we're adding more money to that budget. The bilingual budget is a lot longer, bigger than that. That is that particular account. We're only putting the accounts affected by the amendment.
Okay, so that, that's just that one account, so, okay. Because I guess the same question is on the next page.
Same thing, yes, sir. Every time, Mr..
So for this account, you allotted 31,148?
On those two accounts, yes.
But how do we go, uh, how do we get from 31 to 203,000?
The 203,000 is money from the 2019, 2020 year that did not get spent. And it's being rolled forward to the new year, so we can spend it in the new year.
Okay, so that's not necessarily being spent right now. It's just carrying over, okay?
That's all, all right.
Okay.
My question to understand this better, Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, sir.
So every, every fund has its own miscellaneous expense. Like, let's say the, uh, the local fund has its miscellaneous expense, the, uh, what is the other one? The bilingual fund, bilingual has its own miscellaneous expense. They're all different in different, uh, funds.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Miscellaneous is a term that the Texas Education Agency puts on that account. Whatever that is, the old 6200 account goes on 6299. And that's obviously the item that can go there.
Because I saw they all have different account numbers, so they all belong to its own specific fund.
Yes, 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 sir.
Mr. Trevino?
No, I had to, yes, sir.
Number two, okay?
Uh, thank you, Andres.
You want to move on that item now?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve letter E, number one and number two of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez to approve.
I'll second.
Item E, and then we have a second by Mr. Nieto?
Mr. LoSantos.
Do, pardon, Mr. LoSantos?
Yes.
Thank you, I stand corrected. Okay, we have a, a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Mr. LoSantos to approve item E, one and two. Let's bring it to a vote. Mrs. Sutaita?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Jaime?
Aye.
Post Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. LoSantos?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. That now takes us to item 14, discussion items. A, first reading of policy upgrade 116 from the Texas Association of School Boards. Dr. Garcia?
For the trustees, this is a no-action item. It is a first reading, we'll bring it to you at a different meeting for, uh, approval. But update 116 contains five local policies. As districts, we have a choice with local as long as it's aligned to legal. Uh, and all five have been replaced. It also contains one exhibit and of which three have been replaced. Included are also in update 116, 34 legal policies, that is the law, those we don't have choices with, of which 33 have been replaced and one replaced table of contents. So the five local policies, um, Mr. Dr. Garcia has provided descriptions for you, have to do with CQB, technology resources and cybersecurity training, which is required annually and it's reportable. We have to report it that everybody has gotten it, including Board of Trustees members. So for that one, it, uh, it is, um, to ease compliance with the state law provisions, requiring the board to select a cybersecurity training program and verify and report the training by district employees. Recommended, uh, revisions include, uh, the board delegating the responsibility to me. And, uh, with me, I have our cybersecurity coordinator, which we have to by law, and that is Mr. Carlos Martinez. So that's what that about. The second one has to do with our at-will employment and its recommended revisions to clarify that an at-will employee's appeal of dismissal would follow the district's employee grievance policy and not begin with the board. So, uh, and so it'd be, it follows the same grievance policy as other employees. So that's another local change. DCE is another local change, is employment practices, other types of practices. And the recommended revision from CASB is to clarify that an appeal by employee whose non-chapter 21 contract is not reissued at the end of the contract period would follow the district employee's grievance policy and not going directly first to the board. So it would be like the three levels. The next one, uh, has to do with health and wellness and medical treatment. And this policy service recommends several revisions to the policy on student medical treatment to reflect the guidance from the Texas Department of State Health Services and common district practices. So that has, that has to do also with administering medication to, to children. And we are, uh, we do have CASB's recommendations, if you want more information, in a minute. And then GKA is community relations, uh, conduct on school premises. It's a revision that specifies that a person filing a complaint regarding refusal of entry to or ejection from property based on education code 37.105 shall be permitted to address the board within 90 calendar days. This change aligns with changes made in update 116 to the grievance policy on F and G and GF. So, um, we do have staff here, if you have any questions, it's just a first, uh, reading on these. There are five policies. Uh, we can provide the copies of the five policies again, and the board update, if you wish, on Friday, that, uh, gives you the red line, what's been, um, what, for us to strike out, and in blue, what for us to add based on CASB's recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. H, is there any questions?
Not on, not on these items, but I, I would like to, we have mentioned before about board policy and how we have to take into account that it's ongoing, it's maintenance, we have to keep reviewing it if things change. So that, there are some things that we would like to review and look over that are already in the policy that I don't know when can we, does it have to be in a board meeting to go over the policy we already adopted? Or little tweaks that we want to make, when can we do that?
We can, we can, yeah, we can bring, uh, any policy changes to local that the board would like to be considered. We can put that as a first reading on one board meeting and then approval on the next one.
Okay.
And we will get with CASB to, to, you know, we always work with CASB to get the language and the okay, yes, or you can't do that because in legal it says this.
Okay.
We'll work with CASB and we're going to get as a first reading and then a subsequent, uh, board meeting for approval.
Okay.
And I think you just have to bring it up to Dr. Canales, so, to be able to put it on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Item B, interim financial report for the five-month sentence for January 31st, 2021, Dr. Canales.
Okay, for the trustees, we do have a, this on a, the superintendent's report. Mr. Galata, if you can, uh, pull up the superintendent's report again, please? This whole, um, item is a no-action item and it will be presented by Mr. Sanchez and by me. So just, uh, just a couple of, of items on what's on this financial report, uh, for the community. You know, this financial report looks at the very, very top and looks at our revenue sources. You know, how our money comes to our school district. And it, uh, consists of local, which is tax collections, investment interest, athletic events and some other items. We also get our revenue from the state as part of the foundation school program, which includes the average daily attendance, plus any weights for special programs, plus state comp, plus our tax collection effort. And, uh, and then includes federal, which the majority is a national lunch breakfast program, federal programs, indirect costs and shards. So this is our revenue stream, this is what drives our budget. So, uh, next slide. Uh, next slide. Uh, so for right here, for revenue streams, um, for local, we budgeted, uh, 24 million, almost 25 million. We have received about 18,400,000 for a variance of 6,502, 649, for 73.89%. That is of the local. So this is the money that we've received so far from local sources. From our state, we have, we budgeted 1, 137,408, 250. We've received 77,500-plus thousand for a variance of almost, um, 60 million for 56.46%. For federal, 13,459,961. We've received about 4.5 million for a variance of 8.9 million for 33.33%. So for our total, we budgeted 175,776,721, based on a 15,280. So we need to make that 15,280. Um, and for our totals, we're at 57.16% at the very, very end. So that's what we generate. I did want to go back one slide to, for our tax collections. Uh, we get asked this every year about this time, where are we with our tax rates? How do we compare to other districts? Wesco ISD continues to be the lowest, one of the lowest, uh, when it comes to the total tax rate in Hidalgo County and in the Rio Grande Valley. So the only one that has a, um, tax rate less than ours is Port Isabel, which is the island, you know, the revenues from the island. So we're still very, very low. We're at 1.01890. And then after us, the next one is Donna ISD with $1.13. We go to Edinburgh, $1.13. So we're still very, very low when it comes to our, um, tax, total tax rate. And I'm not making a judgment on this, just saying we're low.
Andres?
Yes, sir.
Donna would be considered, uh, school district about our size, you know?
Yeah, they're, uh, a little smaller than us.
Just, just so that, um, our community knows. And I know it's a math question, so ballpark figure, though. What's the difference from a dollar, 1.01 to a dollar 13?
To a dollar 15?
Dollar 13, Donna.
Oh, but 11 pennies. 11 pennies.
So how much, you're talking about, how much, how much would it generate for tax for, for our district? Is that what you're asking, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
On, uh, but you're talking, yeah, the taxes, so you're talking about the state. The state is kind of hard to, to figure out because there's a lot of items involved. But, but this is the tax rate on, uh, property at 100,000 for the taxable, uh, part. So it, it has us at 100,000, the, the value. The 11 pennies of that give you, uh, 1,100 dollars more, uh, revenue to them than us. And that amount brings some more money from the state.
Right, but I, I know it's kind of hard to put you on the spot, but it, it's a big significance when you look. On here, it doesn't show, but
Right.
when, when our community actually knows that the dollars, because obviously we're always concerned about taxes. But sometimes when you're taxed this low, it doesn't generate some of that extra funding that could go to be used in a school district elsewhere. That was it, but I didn't mean to put you on the spot, just thought you might have that.
Yeah, because I think Donna is about 2,000 less, I don't know, about 15,000 total, something.
Right, and we, yeah, we compare ourselves, we look at Donna, we look at Mission, we look at Harlingen.
Yeah.
Uh, and we compare, Harlingen's a little bit bigger, Sherland's a little bit smaller.
San Benito, yeah. The, 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 that, both.
Those are 15,000, between 15,000 and 20,000 students that we look at.
That's what we're going to receive from the state because of our ADA and of course from COVID and so forth. They haven't determined that yet, uh, so this year's going to be a tough year. It's going to be a very tough year at the end, so. We're just going to move forward?
Yeah, exactly. I just wanted our community to know, when you look at the schools you mentioned at $1.19, $1.20, it, it's a big significance, uh, indifference.
Right, and, and we could, um,
Maybe in the update.
Yeah, on the update and perhaps, you know, we can put a slide on the next board meeting, Mr. Sanchez.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so will we?
I had a question for the, on the next, on the, are you done with this slide right here, Dr. Canales?
We're, we, we're going on to the next slide, Mr. Trevino, do you have the question about the one before it?
No, behind the one, the one where it had, uh, the ADA at 15,200.
The revenue.
That was a budget, that was an estimate that we use from last year's figures. But we're really, and I, and I'm trying to look through all my notes, we really, right now, we're sitting at 16,000?
For enrollment, 16,000, Mr. Mr., uh, do you go back to that slide? So in enrollment, we need to, go more. Right there.
16,000.
So for ADA, you look at the average daily attendance, nine, this is the one that we have to fix. It says 18,000, is that 18,397? That is incorrect, we have to get the number. So last year we're at 15,176 on the 19th week, when we compare the 19th week.
Correct.
Which this, we budgeted up, uh, 15,200. So, Mr. Trevino, we're going to have to get you, because this number's incorrect, where we are right now. We want to get above the 15,200.
So, so what about your weekly enrollment, what, 16,593?
Yes, sir, 16,593. And of the 16,593 of the enroll, there's some children that generate membership, they're membership, they generate funds and some that don't. And some generate half-day funds of a pre-K. So what we want to do is of the 16,593, the ones who are in membership, we need them attending, right? So their ADA is 15,200 or better. So on a day, daily basis, we have 15,200 or more children involved and engaged in learning, present frontline.
So the 15,000 or 15,000, so that's where it may be, you know, because this is maybe a little misleading. Because I'm, I'm sitting here looking at the 16,593 or the 18,300. So when we present, you know, when we budget for, for 15,200, well, then there's, there's a, there's a gap there that we're actually doing very well, but it's really not, not the case since we don't receive funds, you know, from, from that whole number. So, okay.
My question is, if, if pre-K goes all day, why do we only get a half-day for them?
We still, we want to spend that.
That is the mandate from the state. Yeah, they only allow us, initially it was only half, now they require it to us with help of three to do it. But we still only get half for the student that qualifies.
Correct.
Unfortunately.
Because the teachers are working just as hard as all the other ones and they're only getting?
Well, the legislative, the legislative session is occurring right now and that's a, it's a good talking point. It comes up every single year by multiple organizations, including the Texas Association of School Boards, that fund it. You know, that, that whatever you're mandated from the agency or you're asking us to do what's right for kids, fund it. You know, put the money behind it so that we can. So moving on to the next slide, Mr.?
So we, on item Tina?
We're still, we're still the final ISD. Andres, do you want to, you want to take over the expenditures?
Okay, the slide before, we're not finished yet.
Yes, we're not finished yet.
Two more to go.
So that's, that's, that's the revenues for the disbursements or what we like to consider, consider the expenditures. You'll notice that the, the total at the bottom is about 10 million more than what we're receiving. And there are several reasons for that. One of it is every year, if we don't expend funds, and that happened this year because of of COVID-nineteen, probably more than previous years, we can carry over, roll over those funds. You saw the budget amendments for the CCMR and the bilingual to roll over funds that were left from last year.
Next slide, even.
Oh, is it the next slide?
Yeah. There.
Okay, so that difference is about ten, ten million. So for, for our expenditures, our disbursements, we actually have more money than we're generating this year from the local, state, and federal revenue sources, because we carried over, and at least for two of the items, I believe, we took money from, or is it three, from fund balance, like the incentive pay in December. So even though it looks like it's a big gap, the money's there for the expenditures. I guess that's a point I want to make. The money's there. Okay, Mr. Sanchez, do you want to carry on?
Yes, yeah, the difference is nine point five million. And I know, we have discussed it, we, Mr. Cuero, to the Los Santos to go over this in more detail. But yet, the, the exit at nine point five, looks like we're spending more money than we're getting. The reason that is like that is because we're bringing money like that, as panel said, from the fund balance. Not everything is from the unassigned fund balance, or savings, or rainy day fund, that we call it. Only three million of these came from there. Uh, most of it for the incentive pay, and another one for five hundred thousand was for PPE, somebody that the board approved in September, and then a hundred and twenty thousand later for student debt yields. The rest of the money is money that we had last year, for example, the, the second item, million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, the forty-eight thousand, the, the, those two. Our money that was for last year, we had already a lot of items, they did not arrive by August thirty-one, but the money we had on those purchase orders went back to fund balance. But, uh, the items arriving in September or October, and we don't do the movement of moving the money to the new year, the current year budget, when I guess you pleaded with last year's expenditures. So we move forward the purchase orders and the corresponding budget. And the money, while not currently unassigned fund balance, was in a separate account, a restricted account. And also the five points to the very first one, those are money like the ones that we just approved for CCIMR and bilingual, those are state funds that we have to spend them. We cannot spend them on anything else except those programs, but we don't spend it, we have to roll it forward to the next year. And, and that's what that is. So altogether, a nine point five million dollars of expenditure. And then you go to the next slide table, see, you'll see it here. The first line is a hundred and seventy-five million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand. That is the same amount of revenue that we have in the budget. And then we have the amounts that were added, nine point five, gives us an amended budget of expenditures of one hundred eighty-five million three hundred and sixty-two thousand. We hope this helps with the reconciliation and, uh, apparent, or to dispel the appearance that we have, that we're spending more than we're getting. It's money that we bring it forward, but it's not from the fund balance that we can use for emergencies or that type of thing. Does that help explain that?
Yes. Andres, question?
Yes.
Any, any, uh, money that was reimbursed for PPD, all those things, where do you place that money that we received?
We don't have it yet, we haven't received it, but we'll, we'll let you know when we get it.
Okay, good. Do you know approximately how much?
Well, uh, we have some needed, almost a million dollars of expenditures for a good technology equipment.
Correct.
We're looking at three quarters of a million more or less, depending upon the approvals, hopefully, most of it. Uh, we'll be getting it in a month or two, I hope.
Okay, and that was through the state application, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So that is the internal financial report presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Gonzalez, uh, we are, I was trying to cut you guys short a while ago, but.
It's okay.
Thank you for that report, and, uh, and now we, we are ready for item C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, the acknowledgment of the Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for December twenty twenty, current tax and delinquent taxes. Dr. Gonzalez.
And Board of Trustees is another no-action item, and Mr. Sanchez is going to highlight some key points on this report, Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, this one, we don't have a slide, but you'll have a copy of the agenda. Uh, from the current taxes, uh, of a levy of twenty-five million six hundred and seventy-thousand, we have collected through, uh, December, December thirty-one, eleven million eighty-nine thousand, almost ninety thousand. There's some adjustments of four hundred and seventy-six thousand that were added to the tax fraud, and that represents forty-two point forty-one percent. Last year, through December thirty-one, we collected forty-one point, point forty-one percent. So we have collected one percent higher than last year, through December thirty-one. On the delinquent taxes, out of four million one hundred and eighty-three thousand that we started the year with, we have collected four hundred and one thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars, and that represents nine point seventy-five percent of the budget. Last year, we had collected seven percent, so we are two point seventy-three percent higher than last year. So through December, we're doing well on the property tax collection. The January report is, uh, barely got released, so we're going to have to, to put it in here for the agenda, but we'll let you know in next month. That is the, the report.
Thank you, Andres.
Yes, sir.
It takes us to item fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Or? Discussion and possible action items. A, discussion and possible action to submit a nomination from within our local board to fill an interim position on the TASB Board of Directors, Dr. Gonzalez.
And Board of Trustees, just some background information on this. Trustees elected to serve are charged with carrying out the policies established by the Delegate Assembly of the Association. The individual director is expected to attend four meetings of the board each year, with one of the meetings being at the same time as the annual TASA TASB convention. That one usually happens in September. In addition, the director will be asked to serve on a standing committee that will meet as needed in conjunction with board meetings. The director should be able, should be a capable, experienced school board member who can assist in providing the association with outstanding leadership. A nominated individual must submit the following information to TASB by Friday, February the twenty-sixth, active member's nomination form, and candidate's willingness to serve, candidate biographical sketch, and candidate questionnaire. So the election process, a nomination committee will interview candidates at the TASB Spring Nominations Meeting on Thursday, March twenty-fifth, at the TASB headquarters in Austin, Texas. Nominees will be notified of their interview times once the nomination period is closed. So Board of Trustees, there's two vacancies in Region One. For the TASB Board of Director, Directors, local boards in Region One are invited to submit a nominee to fill one of the interim positions, A or B. The local board's nomination of one of its trustees shall be considered the district's endorsement for that director position. These vacancies, again, will be filled by the TASB Board in March. Um, so Board of Trustees, it's open if you want to self-nominate, or if you're nominated by, um, anybody on this board.
Would anybody else, uh, that be interested?
I think if you ask for volunteers, that's the best way at this time, because I already served on one board already, I've served on some of it before, so, uh, it's good information, and, uh, it helps our board. Not myself, I can't, I got too many things, so, anybody else?
But, you know, I, I looked at a lot of those requirements, and, and, and they are pretty selective, and they, and they are going to ask for, for, for experience there.
Yes.
So, after looking at everything, I was gonna, I was gonna throw the ball your, your way, uh, Mr. Nieto.
I wish I could, you know?
I have already spoken to Mr. Gonzalez, and he, uh, he's got a lot of, uh, things to do, and, and, Dr. Hammy, I think you're, uh.
Oh, it's tough.
I know that I would not, uh, and for you youngins, uh, they probably would, uh, put you through a very, very tedious, uh, um, process, uh, you know, but.
Right.
So at this time, we have no, no volunteers? So do we take this as a, as a no-action item, or just vote to not, um?
I think later on, we can, if somebody from another district applies, we can endorse that particular person.
Yeah, we can endorse if, if somebody else submits.
There you go. I, I know that we did last year.
Right.
Right, right. So no action is required, President Plan. If, if, uh, if at this time, the board does not wish to nominate someone from our board, no action is required.
So we, we will take no action on this item.
Correct.
Let's move to item B. Discussion and possible action to submit application to the Texas Education Agency for the educator appraisal waiver for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, Dr. Gonzalez.
And Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you approve the application waiver to the Texas Education Agency, uh, for the educator, uh, for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty school year. So due to the disruptions of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty school year resulting from COVID, we want to request a waiver for all general teacher T-test requirements, including the student growth requirements and the student growth requirement in the principal evaluation system on T-Pass, which would apply to Texas Education Code twenty-one point three-five-one, twenty-one point three-five-two, and the applicable rules entitled nineteen, TAC, Chapter one fifty, related to teacher appraisal and student growth in T, and, and T-Pass. So we're asking to waive, uh, the T-test for our stu-, for our teachers, and the student growth portion for our principals. We're seeking your approval.
Second.
Hey, who, who moved for the approval? Mr. Nieto? And who's second? Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, we, we have a motion by Mr. Nieto, and a second by Mr. Gonzalez, to, uh, submit the application to the Texas Education Agency for the education appraisal waiver for the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one school year. Do we have any discussion?
The only thing is, for teachers, of course, they've been through difficult times this year, and I think it's, it's important that we assist them with this, with this particular time, because they've done a lot, you know, and, and so to, again, do the appraisal this year, uh, it'd be difficult for them. And like Mrs. Sustaita said, some of them are teaching virtual and face-to-face, totally different than what you normally teach, so that's a reason that I, 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 I believe in that.
I can agree. Um, you know, the, the classroom setting has now changed, like I said, it's distance learning, it's virtual, just even the classroom management of trying to keep kids focused and engaged, uh, over the computer is going to be difficult as well, so, so I think this is a very good move on the board.
Okay, uh, well, let's, uh, bring it to a vote, and, uh, signify your approval by saying I want to call your name, Mrs. Sustaita?
Definitely, aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Hammy?
Aye.
Lucerino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item C. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, TAFR, the report for the fiscal year ended August thirty-one, twenty twenty, Dr. Gonzalez.
And Board of Trustees, um, we do have presenters here today. We have Mr. Ricky Longoria, um, CPA, CFE Partner, and Mr. Luis A. Lopez, CPA, CFE, Audit Manager of the audit firm Burton McCumber Longoria, LLP, and they will be making a presentation, uh, to us on the, um, CAFRA, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So this report covers fiscal years from September first, twenty nineteen, to August thirty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, the CAFRA report includes a traditional audit report, plus a supplementary statistical section that includes additional financial, economic, and demographic information. By law, TA requires that all school districts in Texas hire an independent auditor, certified public accountant, to audit the financial statements and financial records of school districts annually. The audit report must be completed, been approved by the board, and submitted to TA within one hundred and fifty days of the end of the fiscal year, which was, for us, was Thursday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. However, due to the ransomware attack of the district, some financial information, we were not able to provide it to the auditors between December fourteenth and January seventh. Uh, the Texas Education Agency does allow school districts to submit the audited financial report in a required data fee file up to thirty days after the hundred and fifty-day deadline, without being affected in the first indicators rating for the related fiscal year. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is prepared in accordance with the Governing Auditing Standards, GAS. The Annual Financial and Compliance Audit Report is based upon Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Thirty-four, Basic Statements and Management's Discussion and Analysis for the State and Local Governments. Uh, the Annual Financial Compliance Audit Report also reflects the effects of GASB sixty-eight and sixty-five. As per the auditors, the audit report has been issued with an unmodified, clean opinion, which is the highest audit opinion that can be issued. They did find, have two findings, uh, and they will be sharing information about that as well. Mr. Longoria, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, I think you summarized my presentation pretty good, I'm, I'm done.
You're surrounded.
I know, I am, and so I'll, I'll, I'll start with that, I'm not, I'm going to apologize for those trustees right behind me, those right behind me, certainly, it's not my intent to put, to put my back towards you all at all. Um, again, as, as Dr. Gonzalez, and for the record, my name is Ricky Longoria, I'm an audit partner and managing partner of the firm of Burton McCumber Longoria. We're honored and privileged, actually, to be, to be part of your team with me today, of course, to have, uh, Mr. Luis Lopez, who was the audit manager on, on the job. He, he was the one, you know, he was really the one on, uh, you know, in, in the weeds, if you will, conducting the audit, working directly with Mr. Sanchez, um, and making sure that this, this got done. As Dr. Gonzalez indicated, um, we did have somewhat of a glitch, uh, with regard to completing the audit, just because of the, the glitch you all had with respect to ransomware. Certainly, we got past that, and so here we are today. So thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, for summarizing all that for me, because it's great. So I, I am here, uh, to speak about the, or at least present the comprehensive, comprehensive annual financial report, um, and I, there's actually a couple of things I need, at least certainly one thing that I need to cover before we actually get into the body of the report, and I don't know, uh, you all need to tell me what you have in front of you. Do you have a bound copy, or do you have it on, on a computer?
We have your booklet.
Okay, great, okay. I'm hoping that, that in your booklet, you have just a, just a, just a staple letter. Okay, I, I'm going to start with, with the governance letter, certainly, I'm not going to read the letter in its entirety, but I want to certainly share the spirit of the letter. And so this is what's called the governance letter, and the purpose of this letter is really to communicate, uh, you know, to you as trustees, the conduct of the overall audits, the scope of the audit, and things of that nature. And so just to confirm, uh, the, the period that we're talking about is for the year ending, August thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty. And I know as trustees, you know, what you're probably more concerned about is where are we today and where are we going? But the reality is, is by statute, this audit has, has to be done, and so as auditors, we tend to be historical basis, right? Because we're always looking back as to, as to the reasonableness of the numbers, which is really important, because the numbers that we're auditing are forming the foundation of the, of the decisions y'all are making right now. Okay, so we're here, third-party confirmation of the, of that basis. Our audit was performed according to government auditing standards, also in accordance with uniform guidance. What that generally, what, what that generally means is just acknowledging that because of the amount of federal funds that the district received during that particular year, it succeeded about thirty-four million dollars. There are additional procedures over, over and above that a traditional audit, audit, uh, or auditor would normally have to do. This was not a, a single audit, uniform guidance audit, or even a government auditing standards audit. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that. One of, one of the other things, and part of this letter is really meant to bridge what we call the, the expectation gap. The expectation gap, meaning what you as a trustees or a board expect from the auditor, and the reality of what the financial audit really means. And so, and so when we conduct our audit, you know, most folks think, and I'm not saying you all think, but most of us think that auditor is, is, uh, almost blessing the entire financial statement, okay? That the auditor has somehow gone in there and audited every transaction and every activity that you as trustees have, have, have approved, and then that approval worked its way down through the system. And certainly, that's not the reality of what we do. What, what we do as auditors is our primary objective is to opine, meaning we express an opinion on your financial statements, to determine whether they're fairly stated in all material respects, and then acknowledging that in that process, that there are estimates in, 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 in your financial statements, for example, uh, depreciation expense on a piece of equipment is somebody's best guess on how long that equipment's going to last, right? And so just kind of sitting back and saying, hey, does that make sense in the years that they're assigned to that item, as an example. Another example would be your, your collection of taxes. Heard y'all's tax report earlier? We all know that, you know, certainly in a perfect world, we'd like to collect a hundred percent of all of our tax revenue, but that's not reality. And so there's an allowance for, you know, for bad debt, uncollectible taxes, again, we sit back, and we say, okay, well, most districts will use like a ten-year average or ten-year historical basis in order to come up with that number allowance for bad debt. So again, just acknowledging that. So again, just acknowledging that there is some judgment involved in a financial statement. It's not always to the penny or things of that nature, okay? The other thing I need to convey is disacknowledging that we did not ever have disagreements with management. You know, they want us to let you know that to the extent that there was a disagreement with management, but certainly that we will let you know and tell you what the spirit of that was, but that was not the case here. Acknowledging that management is taking responsibility for the financial statements. Again, going back to that expectation gap, since the auditors are not involved in the underlying transactions, we don't approve the transactions, we're not involved in transactions, then the foundation for which these financial statements are built upon, really it's not us, it's you all as trustees. So just acknowledging that management takes responsibility for that. And just a couple of other things, just acknowledging that to our knowledge, as it relates to auditing matters, y'all didn't go out and seek second opinions and things of that nature in order to change our opinion or affect our opinion. Now, with that said, I do need to acknowledge one thing. And I'm going to guess that you all discussed it at some point or time. But during the audit process, it came to our attention that the board had voted to have a forensic audit done, which is totally fine. The board can choose to do whatever it wants. But it did affect our process because it came right in the middle of our audits. So as any prudent and professional auditor would do, we reached out, we had a conversation with a couple of board members, we had a conversation with management just to get an understanding as what was the driver behind that purpose. And as a result of that, we took that information, we tweaked our procedures, we did other things that maybe we normally wouldn't have just to make sure that there wasn't anything other, anything out there that may affect our ultimate opinion. And so, you know, for those that were present in the call, it may have seemed awkward, to say the least, but unfortunately, that's just the process of the audit, you know, not every conversation. You know, it's just, I just wanted to, you know, just acknowledge that. I know sometimes those conversations can be awkward, and certainly it wasn't meant to be awkward. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and move to the audit report unless somebody has a question at this point. Okay. So, Mr. Sanchez, did you give them page numbers?
Yes, they have.
So I've given Mr. Sanchez a list of page numbers that I was going to kind of focus on. Again, this is 150-page report. And most boards want me in and out in about five minutes. But I would like to speak to certain things within the body of reports. I think that they're going to be helpful for you as you all move forwards and your decision-making process. So first, I'm going to turn to page nine. And you'll notice page nine doesn't even have any numbers on it, okay? The reason I'm pointing to page nine because I think boards, I think they all did a great job. I think you all do a great job in celebrating success within your district, okay? And you'll see on page nine what's called a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence Financial Reporting. And I just want to just acknowledge the district and the finance department for actually being awarded this particular certificate. From an auditor's perspective, from an accountant's perspective, it's actually a big deal. It really, really is. And so, and so appreciate the fact that your audit report achieved this award. I would ask you to congratulate at some point. I think I heard some things earlier mentioned maybe, but it takes a lot of hours to put this thing together in a manner that meets this high level of expectation. And so congratulations to Westco ISD for getting, for being awarded, actually for the first time, this particular certificate of achievement for excellence financial reporting because at the end of the day, it indicates that you all have a very comprehensive report and a very transparent report, okay? I'm going to ask you to turn to page 17. On page 17, this is actually our report, our report to the board. And you'll notice that it's addressed to the board. I'm not going to go into and read all, every paragraph, but I just want to confirm to you and the public that may be watching that it is our opinion that the financial statements presented within this report are fairly stated in all material respects. And that's what's called an unmodified opinion. Most people refer to it as a clean opinion. And so congratulations to the district. Certainly, to my knowledge over the past years, you know, you have been consistent in getting an unmodified opinion. And so that's something I wanted to confirm to the board, okay? Now, again, there's 150-plus pages here. And so when I make these presentations, I always try to make it from your perspective. I don't think anybody expects a board member to be an accountant and understand the details of an entire report. In fact, most boards that I work with prefer just to hear the highlights. You know, give me the things that's important for me to know. And so that's my objective for today. And so if you turn to page 33. On page 33, you'll see the balance sheet. And if you're not accustomed to looking at these type of reports, one of the first things you'll notice is, wait a minute, you know, where's my fixed assets? Where are my, where's my debt? I mean, you call it a balance sheet, and maybe, you know, through your personal experience, you may have prepared a balance sheet for yourself, and they asked you to put these assets and liabilities around there. Understand that under governmental accounting, they have a different method of accounting. And that method of accounting does not account for fixed assets or debt on this particular statement. But the importance of the statement lies really in one particular number. If you go down to line 3,600, and I'm going by the data control codes on your left, you will see an unassigned fund balance of $39,032,046. That's part of your general fund, okay? I always tell board members who maybe aren't as savvy in reading financial statements, I said, look, if you understand that any government entity pretty much lives and dies by its unassigned fund balance, if you can just get that, wrap your mind around that, just one number, and the importance and appreciate that number, you will do well. Because all, certainly, there's a lot of other numbers, but if you can just focus on that one number. And so even with the board that I work with, you'll have, board members always asking, what's the effect on the general fund? What's the effect on the general fund? And just that alone really expands their understanding and appreciation for that number. And of course, that number really kind of doesn't mean anything unless you compare it to something, right? Okay, at this point, I'm just telling you it's a number. Last year, that number was 38 million. So you all were able to increase that about a million? That's a good thing. TA puts out guidance as to how much fund balance is appropriate for a school district. And their guidance says that a school district should aim to have what's considered 75 days in available fund balance within their general fund. I will tell you that based upon my rough computation, you have just a little bit over 80 days available to you. Check mark, that's a good thing, okay? One of the other things, I'm not going to turn to this page because I don't want everybody turning pages back and forth because we'll get all lost. But there is some statistical information in the back of the report that if one day you want to sit there and look at it, it's really, really interesting. And one of the schedules that's back there is a 10-year history of what the unassigned balance has been for Westco ISD, okay? And I will tell you that if you go back to those 10 years, the number of $39,032,046 is the highest level of fund balance that this district has had in 10 years. I think that's a good thing. We turn to page 35. So 35 is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. You could almost equate that to an income statement where you've got your revenues and your expenses. And again, focusing on the general fund because it is important. You'll see total revenues of $175 million, acknowledging that 15% is really coming from your taxpayers, the remaining 70, or the remaining difference is coming from federal and state sources. And most board members say, well, give me the bottom line. How do we do that here? And so if you go down to page, sorry, not page, the data control 1200 on the left-hand side, you'll see net change in fund balance, and it is a negative, 406,126. It is a negative, meaning that at the end of the day, you transferred or spent more out of your general fund than you brought in. Now, everything's relative, right? Well, certainly, a positive number is better than a negative number. I think we can all agree on that. But if your bullseye is to always have them the same, that should always be your objective, right? But reality tells you, nobody ever hits it exactly. Some are going to be above, some are going to be below. In this case, you spent $464,126 more than you brought in. Again, everything's relative. 406, over $175 million worth of revenue that you managed? In my mind, you may have not hit the center bullseye. The bullseye's all about this big. And I think y'all hit it for that here. Does that make sense? Now, I had mentioned earlier that if you go back to that balance sheet, I said, look, the balance sheet may look different to you because you don't see assets, you don't see liabilities, right? Because it's not a normal balance sheet. It's under accounting specific for governmental entities. Then we turn to page 62. On page 62, note G. And I'm bringing this up because, okay, general fund is important. I just said that, that was number one. But it's also important to know how much you owe. And when I say how much you owe, I don't mean just your normal vendors. I'm talking about your debt. How much is your bonded debt? How much, what are your borrowings today? And, you know, are the amounts too high relative to our operation? Are they too low? Are there things that we could be doing and maximizing certain things by taking on more debt, you know, improving classrooms, making repairs? You know, whatever y'all need to do. So on page 62, note G, I just want to share with you, and you'll see various columns, and the total malice of total debt is $68,631,801. That is the total debt, meaning borrowings that the district has, okay? And in the year being audited, there was no new debt. In fact, the last time, this kind of debt, the last time that the district went out and procured more debt was actually in the year prior. So it wasn't the '19 year, it was the '18 year. And if you go on that list by description, you'll see maintenance tax notes, Sears 2018, public property finance contracts, 2019. Again, those were not this year's, those were last year's, okay? You get back to the question, well, how much is too much debt? Or can we take on more debt? And unfortunately, I think your financial advisor is really the one who can better address that question. But I will say this, again, if you were to run to the statistical section in the back, you'll see how much debt that the district has had over the prior 10 years. And so that's a data point as to, wait a minute, you know, how does my debt today compare to maybe my debt three years ago or debt five years ago? And so, you know, again, you can look at it various ways. And so I said, well, I said, what was the average debt outstanding over the past 10 years for the district? I just took all the debt outstanding, divided by 10, and I come up with a number. And how does the number that I have today compare to that average, okay? I will tell you that just a simple math, that the amount that you're carrying today is less than the average that you carried in the prior 10 years, okay? Just as a data point. As to whether you should or can or should take on more debt, certainly, I think that's really your financial advisor's call. But I just want to let you know where that number is. The other thing I wanted to share with you is on page 80 and 81. And please note that the footnotes, you know, obviously, I'm not going through all the footnotes just to give time, but they are an integral part of this report, okay? So at your leisure, because I know we don't have enough to read as board members, you know, take some time to read those footnotes because I think you'll find some good information for you in there. What I wanted to share with you on page 80 and 81 was just two things. One is not even an audit report can escape COVID. And what I mean by that is that you'll see within the footnotes, we've had to disclose just the existence of COVID and the fact that, you know, we don't know what the future holds, right? Certainly, it looks better, it looks bright, relatively speaking. You think about where we were, you know, March, April of last year. But I just want to acknowledge that you have a footnote with respect to COVID, as well as a footnote with respect to the cyber attack on the district and the ultimate comment, meaning that the district believes that any negative attacks, any negative effects of the attack were mitigated and therefore does not believe that this attack will affect future operations. So that's, giving you a heads up that that's in there as well. Now, you may ask, well, why? Your report is out of August 31st. Why are you talking about ransomware, you know, so late? Well, we're opining on the August 31st numbers, but we do have a responsibility to disclose any major significant events that happened to the district after August 31st. That's just the professional standard. Okay, and that's why that's in there. I haven't asked for questions, but I'm going to ask. Does anybody have a question so far? Okay, I'm turning to page 108. And there's a specific reason why I'm asking you page 108, okay? Last year, when I made the audit presentation, one of the things that brought to the attention of the board was the trend of the self-insurance fund. So you see 108, you'll see three different funds. You see a self-insurance fund, you'll see the workers' comp fund, and you see the employment fund. And so my comment to the board was this, and I'll be honest with you, I think they already knew it, was that self-insurance fund was trending negative. And at that point, it actually hit the negative point, okay? The board had already taken action to mitigate that, that changed the rates, they took action to control cost. And you'll see that for this year, whereas last year, it was a negative $135,000. As of August 31st, remind you, August 31st, it actually increased its balance, its available funds, to $3.2 million. Okay, and the board did that, the district did that, attacking both sides of the equation. Increase revenues by increasing rates. And I know those are tough decisions to make because they affect employees and things like that. You had to, otherwise this thing would be insolvent. And two, the controlling the cost. I mean, cost last year were about a million and a half or two more. And I say last year, and again, think about the period I'm talking about. Talk about '19, and now I'm talking about '20. August 31st were more '19 than there were in '18. And so it was the effect of those, combination of those two things that really prop that balance up. Now, going forward, I can tell you at our district, because of COVID, because of the number of people getting sick, because of the number of people making claims, rightfully so, that's why they have insurance. You know, that's one fund we're keeping our eye on because it didn't go back to where it was really quick. And so I suspect you're probably doing the same, as evidenced by what I heard earlier. But just a reminder. But just a reminder, because, you know, I brought up last year, I wanted to address it this year. That's all I have with respect to the numbers themselves. Before we get into the two findings, I'm going to ask, y'all have any questions? Okay. I'm going to have Mr. Lopez speak to the findings.
Good evening, trustees. If you could turn over to page one fifty-six of the report. Uh, the first finding we had relates to the supplemental state allotments. These are your, uh, as an example, special ed, dyslexia, comp ed, bilingual, TEA gives, has these allotments that, that provides funding to, to school districts across the state. Uh, one of the requirements with these allotments is that, uh, districts are required to spend a certain amount, a certain percentage of the total allotment that the district is, is granted by TEA. Uh, in testing for, for these compliance requirements, uh, we noted, uh, compensatory education allotment was underspent by about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the early education allotment was underspent by about one point four, almost one point five million, and the uh, college career and military readiness allotment was underspent by about, uh, two hundred uh, thousand dollars for the year ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, so some of this, uh, may have had, s- some of this may, may have been an effect of, of COVID and school closures and things of that nature, and, uh, we are seeing other districts that have had similar issues and not meeting those spending requirements for, for some of these allotments as well. Uh, I will, I will note that the early education, uh, allotment and the CCMR allotment, these are new allotments in twenty twenty that districts didn't have these spending requirements in prior years. Uh, so, so, so I just wanted to make that note that these are new as well, uh, this year. Uh, from a TA, uh, perspective, TA kind of looks at a three-year average on where you're at with, with these spending requirements. Certainly, they, they want to know if you're underspent for one year. They want to know that you're underspent, which is the reason for the, the finding itself, but from their perspective, what triggers a, a, uh, uh, for them to issue a letter to the district to provide a corrective action plan is the three-year rolling average. And so what, what's important, uh, to note, uh, as trustees and, uh, the business office and, and budgeting is, uh, keep, keeping an eye on these allotments the next two years, uh, just to make sure that within that three-year rolling average, that, that you're still okay. So the, uh, that's, that's pretty much the comments I had for the, this finding, unless there are any questions.
What was, uh, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six seventy-four is attached to what now?
Uh, compensa- compensatory education.
Education, okay. And then the so forth, okay.
Yes, sir. The, uh, on page one fifty-seven, uh, this is where we have our second finding. This, this one relates to, to, a- as Ricky mentioned, when, when he started his presentation, part of our, because the district spends a certain amount of federal, federal funds, uh, during the year, they meet a threshold that requires a single audit. And so this finding is, is related to our testing in the federal programs that got selected for testing this year. Uh, in this case, uh, on the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers, that's the federal program that, one of the federal programs that, that we audited. Uh, in this program, uh, the, a big percentage of total expenditures is, is personnel, uh, salaries and those, those type of costs, right? So, uh, in our testing, uh, we tested a sample of, of, of forty payroll transactions. Uh, in that sample, we noted one instance where, where an employee was paid, uh, eight hours more than, than the time they actually worked. And so their, their time sheet reflected a certain number of hours, their, their actual pay reflected an additional eight hours. Uh, yeah, in this case, uh, uh, this, this one transaction did occur during, during the time when the pandemic was starting and there were school closures. Uh, the, not to say that, that, that that's, uh, an excuse for it, uh, uh, but certainly, uh, that, that was one of the reasons that, uh, one of the, uh, reasons that management pr- provided as part of their response to, to that finding. Uh, I will note that in instances where, where you have, uh, I don't want to say chaos, when you have, uh, major events like a pandemic happening, where people might be having hardships, uh, maybe a spouse of a school district employee lost, lost, uh, lost a job, or maybe somebody got sick. These are the times where you want, you want to make sure that the controls, the internal controls are, are, are at the highest level because, uh, when, when people are presented with pressures in their, in their personal lives, that's when, when they might be tempted to, to do something wrong. Not to say that this is the case fr- from, from what, what we reviewed, it appeared to be an error. Uh, but th- this is the second finding that, that we had. Any questions on, on this finding?
Thank you, Luis. And, and again, uh, there is, within the audit report, there is management's response on how they plan to address the issue and resolve the issue and things of that nature, and those, that's also included uh, on the, on the district letterhead, uh, in the back. Now, there, there is a, there is one more letter, uh, we, we just call it a management letter. Uh, my intent wasn't really to, to go through it in detail. It's there. We will be glad to go over in detail if you'd like. Um, but I'll, I'll summarize for you that, uh, in addition to the findings, from time to time, we'll see other things that maybe aren't worthy of a level of finding to include within the report, but certainly want to communicate it to you just so that you can kind of be aware of it. And so, so, so there, there, there's, there's some in there. I don't know if there, any, if any particular one speaks to you or resonates with you for it all.
Number two, I, I'm looking at it right now, comments and recommendations, well, actually both. Um, but number two especially was caught my eye, and I said, hmm. Uh, it says here that you selected a sample of forty non-payroll cash dispersments for testing and noted the correspondingly pay edit list with the document approval could not be provided for eleven of the transactions tested. Now, it says here it's because of the files could not be recovered because of the ransomware.
Right.
Um, but what exactly those eleven transactions that could not be recovered, these cash dispersments?
I don't have the sample, but I, I guess the, the, a- as part of the internal control process i- in, in, uh, in issuing out checks is, w- once, uh, once they go through the process right before they issue checks, they go through one final review where they print a list of checks, which the district refers to as the pay edit list. So they, they do one final review of that before they, they actually sign off and authorize the, the final approval to, to go ahead and, and, and pro- process that check or and issue the checks. And so in this case, when, when we went back and tested our, our sample, uh, because the, these, uh, files are scanned and they, they were on a computer that got affected by, by the ransomware, uh, we weren't, we just weren't able to verify that, that final review and approval, uh, had been done on those. Uh, we did perform alternate, alternative procedures, uh, to satisfy ourselves that, that they were okay. But I guess from this comment, the, the important part is, uh, being able to, to back up and maintain, uh, an, an audit trail, uh, to be able to verify that the controls occurred.
Yeah, and this is, if you like the list, we can do that. Yeah, if you want to see just specifically the balance.
Okay.
Maybe the vendors involved, we can serve that.
Okay, so I don't think, I also did the impression that everything was backed up and recovered, except that maybe the employee portal, pre-applicants, but everything else was backed up.
The servers were, were backed up. This, this was on the individual workstation. Those individual workstations, right? Some of those, and that's not part of that.
Hmm, something different.
And again, if you'd like to specify, we can do.
Yes. I work in an office and I use QuickBooks every day in the accounting system. So I know that we have a daily backup every day, every day that's, you know, it backups by itself automatically. So we don't have it in our district where we have an automatic online daily backup away from.
I'm in the digital. All our servers, but it's like the individual workstations in the offices. I don't dive into everybody's computer. It's just the main.
Yeah, so, so, so if they have it on already, you'll think that, well, don't put it on the, the computer, put it someplace on the server.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, so, so you know it's backed up, you have the solution.
Yeah. Especially the online hosted.
So, so this, so this, this information, the clarification, was backed up on somebody's computer and not the server.
Now it's connected to the server.
Now it's connected to the server, right? So what you're saying is, save your files to the server because they're just backed up. But this, whoever's computer did that, they stored it on, right, it's in the server.
If there are no other questions, I just have a couple of final comments that I make. Uh, one is, uh, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Uh, you can just imagine, every presentation I've actually done since COVID has been, you know, via Zoom or Google's Meet or Hangouts or whatever. And I, I tell folks, it's just my, my thinking, I gotta tell folks, if you think an audit presentation is boring face-to-face on Zoom, it gets absolutely worse. Okay, it is, it is, I mean, it does not get any better. So, so I appreciate your time and attention today. I talked about historians, you know, we're, we're, we're historians. But I, I think, I think it's important to make a couple of comments, certainly one comment going forward. And I know certainly at our district, and I've got to believe in y'all's districts too, is what is the future of funding for, you know, for schools, right? If, if you think back, if you think back in July sometime, um, you know, or I think, I think it was June or July, where really the state was at its peak, the, the comptroller of state of Texas came out and projected almost a five billion dollar shortfall in state revenue. Okay, and I know even our district is trying to grapple with, okay, well, how do we plan for, for this legislative session that's coming up? Because you would think that, again, you've got to put your mindset at that time, think about, well, you know, we need to be prepared, you know, there, despite the recent increase, when I say recent, a year ago, HB three came out, increased school funding, whether the state was going to do something, that was now going to affect school funding to the negative. Well, a couple of weeks ago, and, 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 and administration may have shared this with you already, so this, this may be old news to you all. But the comptroller did, did come out and say, look, I now have a revised, uh, estimated revenues for this budget session. Obviously, they're in session now. Um, and so the shortfall, as we sit here today, would only be about one billion dollars. Now, who am I to tell you that one billion dollars is not a big number? A billion is a billion. But as a school board member, I like hearing one billion more than like hearing five billion. And so I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful, just like hopefully you all are, that, that the public education does not incur cuts. Uh, but since you never know, you just need to continue to be prudent. Be prudent in how, in how you manage yourselves. Again, I talked about your fund balance, I talked about the debt levels. You know, trying to manage revenue and expenses, and you're having to do it. And this is not an overused term, an unprecedented time. Right? And so, and so with that said, no, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be of service to, 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 to the district. I hope you find value in our service and the way we approach things. Uh, we try to be a little bit forward-thinking, uh, we're a little unique, and I, I, I'm a colleague of yours. I can appreciate what y'all are trying to do for all the same reasons y'all are trying to do it. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by, uh, Dr. Rodriguez, and a second by, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, Andrew.
Is there any discussion?
Couple of comments here. Uh, I think it was a comprehensive report, a clean bill of, of state for, for Mr. Sanchez and of course his team. But, uh, as we mentioned earlier, local funding expected to decrease and state revenue increase over the next few years due to House Gulf Three, like you mentioned. But also, uh, West QISD had received the highest financial accountability rating of superior achievement over the last, uh, several years, eighteen years actually. And the last four years have been a perfect score. So, uh, Mr. Sanchez and your team have done an excellent job. We'll continue with the recommendations that they provided, which is their point, you know, in certain areas. Uh, but I think, uh, uh, the district and, uh, of course, uh, business office is doing a very good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Do you want to vote? Signify your approval by a second aye to, uh, support the motion by, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, and, uh, a second by, now, Dr. Rodriguez's motion made, made the move, and Andrew, uh, seconded to, uh, uh, approve the, uh, approval of the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year thirty-one, twenty twenty. Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Hamer?
Aye.
José Vino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. LoSanto?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's ranking recommendation for the construction of the Bobby Lackey Stadium visitor parking lot paving project CSP number twenty-one dash zero one dash one nine. Doctor.
Mark, trustees, uh, thank you. A little background, this project is to pave the visitor's side area of Bobby Lackey Stadium necessitated by the fact that visual parking is needed and adequately comply with all ADA requirements. This project was presented to and approved by the district's facility committee prior presented, prior to presenting it to the board for approval. Going back to November eleventh, twenty nineteen, that's when the board approved procurement method of construction for this project. As part of this approval, the board selected the competitive sealed proposal as the procurement method of construction, delegated ranking authority to administration, and approved the criteria and points as presented. In a total of nine vendors submitted packages, the committee reviewed and ranked all vendor contractors in the table below. Uh, the table shows the vendors, the total project cost, completion time, and their rank by awarded points received. You'll see an NA for awards, uh, points to two vendors. And these were not awarded points since their project cost was more than twice below, uh, bid cost. So the, I am recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the administration's ranking recommendation of proposals received for the construction of this part, uh, paving project as part of CSP twenty-one dash one dash nineteen. This constitutes board approval for the administration to negotiate a contract with contractor rank number one. If negotiations cannot be agreed on with contractor rank number one, the district will end negotiations with this vendor in writing and will start negotiations with number two. If the negotiations cannot be agreed with number two, the district will end negotiations with that vendor in writing and start negotiations with number three. The same process would be followed for the remaining contractors if needed. So, and if negotiations cannot be agreed without con with anybody, we would start the process all over. So administration is recommending the, um, Mid Valley Paving, Inc. for Mercedes, Texas, total project cost of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six. Uh, days to complete, a hundred and twenty. It was ranked first and received a five hundred and forty points. It is about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars more than the, um, second ranked. Um, and the team can talk, the committee can talk about why they, um, selected, uh, the, uh, Mid Valley Paving, if you have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative, uh, administration's ranking. Go with Mid Valley Paving.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Dr. Hamer, second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. I was looking over at the district facility committee. I was on.
I have a question. I was looking over at the district facility committee. I was wondering, who's this? Who's in the district facility committee? And I looked over to the back and I see a name that I do not recognize, Mariano Garcia, PE engineer with M. Garcia Engineering. So my question is this, are we hiring engineers for this project or is it just bidding? We already did before we were, that's what I was wondering, it already got approved before we were even here.
Did the project engineer.
So, and that, that engineer there is going to be working with, if we choose Mid Valley Paving to, to work with them?
Overseeing the construction.
Overseeing the construction, okay. So then the fee of the engineer is already in the 715,000 or is that separate?
No, that's separate.
So the, the, this is actually going to be more than 715,000?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Sanchez, Mid Valley Paving, are they the ones that, did the, the turf at both stadiums?
Yeah, they worked on the, our West Coe East stadium and they did some work at the, the track at Lackey Stadium.
Right, okay. I was here when they did that work and I was very impressed with their, the quality of what they're doing.
They, they did the, they did the new stadium, no? This company did the new stadium?
And I know they did on the, the track, the running track?
And the turf.
Yes. And the turf, oh, they, they did finally like the, yes, they were just sub on the company.
And then they, and I know they fixed a couple of patches over at East, maybe when we were doing the turf.
The turf company was somebody else, but they were a sub on it.
Yeah, I was there, I was there through the whole process.
The turf company was someone else?
Yes, correct.
Turf company.
But I think they hired them coach to do.
Prepping?
All the grading and all of that stuff, and I know they did the track.
Yeah, they, 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 the infrastructure coach and. They completed the work on time? Any, any other discussion?
My, my concern is just that difference of amount, and obviously, I, I don't know, DNT construction. And I know this was previously ranked and previously selected, but I just, you know, to me, it's, it's, again, we're, we're, we're walking into something that was already pre-approved previously, and I'm going to have to abstain on this. I just, I don't understand why, why, I know that I see the number of days, the difference of days, 40 days, 48 day difference. And I know that that can, you know, it can go back and forth on the days there, but I just, i- if, if we're going to be presented with something here like this, you know, I know like, like Jackie asked, you, Mr. Rodriguez, there's additional cost involved here. And I'd like to have all that information present before I make decisions like this. Because it's, because, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, we're, we're, we're sitting here just spending money, you know. Obviously, and I don't know what conditions the pavement is or what have you, but, you know, I, I need more information.
Uh, Mr. Rojas, can you give us a quick detail?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Coach, Mr. President and members of the board. This particular project, again, like Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, it's, it's really driven by the need for the additional parking. We, we have Caliche right now at Bobby Lackey Stadium and it's, it's, it's worked for years. We have issues with handicap parking. And we don't have any really designated handicap public in Bobby Lackey Stadium on the visitor side. We have, I think, two or three stalls and the rest of them, we have to kind of makeshift them. And so we do run some problems when we have events, not just football, but any events that go into the stadium, with, with wheelchair access and having to, you know, mobilize themselves on the Caliche. The other, the other big component of this project is, is flooding and drainage issues. One of the, one of the targets we want to hit also with this project is, you know, to properly, you know, drain the water that we have whenever we do have, you know, heavy rain, you know, because right now the way it's designed or the way it is right now, even, even after many loads of pollution we've put up there ourselves, we have a lot of water retainage that ends up, you know, in, on the turf or, you know, us not able to use the parking period. And so those are some of the issues that, that we have. As, as far as, you know, why Mid Valley Paving, it's, it's a criteria of, of members of the board that we have selective that I think has been approved by the board. And so it's, it's, the criteria is points based on not just pricing, but that they provide us with all the documentation that is required as part of the criteria. Of course, the days, you know, there is zero points, which is the second lowest bidder or the lowest bidder. They had very minimal experience in this project. This project is going to be in detail grading, laser grading, compacting, curbs, entrances, asphalt and concrete work as well, includes concrete underneath the beaches as well on the visitor's side, which we currently don't have. So it's a combination of, of, of a very intrinsic work that requires the experience that we feel Mid Valley Paving brings as compared to the infrastructure, which we, you know, I even have to check it into references myself and Mr. American Oates, and very, very minimal experience when it comes to those details of the project. We've got to keep in mind that we have buses and 18 wheelers that also will be using that for parking lots. So the compaction of, of the, of the soil and the pre-asphalt material that we have to use. And of course, you know, the, the specifications to the, to the rebar and the things of that nature are need to be at a very specific point because of the additional stress that the parking lot is going to have. So we felt that, that those are areas that we were, we were concerned with. And no disrespect, of course, to, to DNT construction at all. Also, we felt that the price range of 700,000 was more along the range of where the competitive bids were. You know, and 500,000, 97,000 is, was, was very low for a project of this magnitude. And so, you know, just things of that, things of, of that nature were, were what we as a committee felt. We were, we were concerned about, of course, the longer days of 100, what was it, 168 days of completion. That also hurt them in the criteria. They also received zero points on the safety record. So things of that nature were, were how the numbers ended up the way they were at the end of the day for, for the ranking of these, of these projects or of this project.
My, my, my greatest concern is the, the quality of what we're going to get.
Yes, yes, Coach, that's a good point, sir. And, and like we were mentioning earlier, Mid Valley Paving is very, very well-known for, this is their forte, which is, you know, the grading, the, the parking lots, asphalt, cement work. They did perform the work at Bobby Lackey Stadium, they did perform the work at West Coast East, has a subcontractor for field turf and then also performed the work for the track renovations at West Coast East High School as well. Previously, they, they, they performed some of asphalt work repairs to the tennis courts at both, both high schools as well. So we know that the type of work they do and they're very timely, which is also something that I, I worry about. August 3rd is our first football practice come, come fall. So we, we really need to be very judicious of time.
I know, obviously a parking lot, you need light pole bases, you need to light it up. Does this include a light pole basis for the parking lot? Or is that something we're going to have to add on later on and have another engineer do the structural for that, and geotechnical? Or is it already included into here?
I believe that that, America, was that included? I have America in the office.
He's on mute, Mr. Garza.
So the answer, the answer was, yes, ma'am, we do have one light pole that is required. We did extend the size of the parking lot as to maximize the number of stalls. So we're, we're roughly getting 266 stalls. One of the things that we also keep in mind is that stadium lighting is going to be on at the time of, of events, especially in the evenings. And we normally do not turn off the lights until we feel that it's safe. I'm in charge of turning off the lights. And so I usually am turning them on midnight, just to make sure that everybody has cleared the, the premises to be safe. But Mr. Michael, we're ruling that we have one light pole?
Yes, as I was saying, I apologize, I was muted there, but yes, we only have one, one light pole that's required and that's going to be in that area of the property we acquired over close to the, the northeast side of the, of the parking lot there, close to Pike. Otherwise, there's spillage of lighting from the stadium lights all over the place and there's plenty of lighting around there.
Any, any more discussion?
He said one, but that, that's not included in the price, right? Or it is, Mid Valley Paving is doing that?
Yes, it, it is part of the project. It is part of the project.
Okay. Again, for, for me, I need all the numbers presented and I, and I know now, I know the area you're talking about, Coach Rojas, on the, on the east side of the stadium.
Correct, yes, sir.
But I just, I can't put my stamp on this. I, I, it feels like I'm in the blind with all this information here with this, you know. I think if, if this would have been, you know, presented a lot sooner than just Friday, you know, I, I, I think it's, it would be, we could better study this and see, but I, I'm more concerned about the full, the numbers is what I'm concerned about. There's a difference already. It's pavement. We're not talking about a construction of a facility. It's pavement. And everybody uses the same material. So that's just, that's my take on this for whatever it's worth.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Dr. Rodriguez for the board to consider the approval of the administration's ranking recommendation construction. Let's take it to vote. Signify your approval by saying aye or no if you do not. Mrs. Saita?
I'm going to abstain from this one just because my, the family business has to do with drilling, so I'd rather just abstain.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Coach Devino, are you going to abstain?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. LoSanto?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item E. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the final completion of the HVAC upgrades project at the Old Paul Rudy Seiza Elementary, Justice Raúl González Elementary and Joe Calvillo Kate Complex, CSP number 18-04-26. As follows, one, final completion of the project and two, change order number three for weather days. Dr. Gonzalez?
Board trustees, this goes back to February 13th, 2017, when the HVAC system upgrades district wide as part of the priority facilities project for the district was approved. The HVAC upgrades projects for these three campuses is one of the projects under the approved priority facilities projects named HVAC system upgrades. So, so the original systems dated back to 2002 and were in need of replacement. That's why we replaced them and the facilities committee and others recommended the replacement. So today we're seeking your approval following for the, for the HVAC upgrades projects at the three campuses mentioned. First, the final completion of the project and second, change order number three for additional contract days due to bad weather. And that was a total of eight days of bad weather days from June 18th to 25th, 2018. So.
I must have approved.
Second. Who? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Nieto?
Yes.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Nieto to consider approval of the final completion of the HVAC upgrades project at Rudy Seiza Elementary, Raúl Justice González Elementary, Justice Calvillo Kate Complex, CSP number 18-04-26 for the final completion of the project and the change order for weather day. Any discussion? Are we happy with the outcome?
Mr. Garza, America?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. Yeah, we, we're, we're happy with the outcome. We finally got everything squared away as far as dehumanification, which was the, the primary cause of the delay in trying to close out the project, but everything is ready.
Okay.
What, what was the total for those eight days, the change order? Was that the 1 million for eight days or what are the?
Well, no, the, if I may, Ms. Mrs. Saita, the eight days is only for delays. There's no change orders. So as far as monetary change orders, this is only a change order for days extension to the contract.
Okay.
Right. Okay. Let's take it, vote for approval. Signify your approval by saying aye, Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Hamer?
Aye.
Coach Devino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. LoSanto?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and possible action for the board to approve PBK architects to develop the specifications and construction documents as well as oversee the construction of the security access control systems project at all middle schools. Dr. Gonzalez?
Board of trustees, our all elementary schools have electronic access now and that is where you walk up to the front door, you keep on the main aisle, you can see your face. There's a voice and a calm prior to letting you into the building. That was part of phase one of our district's commitment to increase safety and security across the district. So this would be phase two and the scope of work includes installing door strikers and card readers on entrance and exit doors at each campus. And this time phase two is in middle schools. So we do have a TA grant for safety and security that we awarded last year in the amount of $280,000 for supplementing what the district would have to put in for this project. The total cost of the project, we're expecting between 400 and 450,000. You do need an engineer or somebody with expertise in the area of safety and security for the electronic access doors. PBK does have somebody that they work with that can provide that service. So we're asking for your consideration, board of trustees, of the approval to hire PBK architects to develop the specs and the construction documents as well as oversee the construction of the security access control system project at our four middle schools. That's, that's the ask.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Move to approve in a second?
No.
Second.
Mr. Nieto? Okay, we have motion by Mr. Gonzalez to approve a second by Mr. Nieto to approve PBK architects to develop the specifications and construction documents as well as oversee the construction of the security access control system project at all middle schools. Any discussion?
Dr. Gonzalez, this is, okay, so we have all our elementary schools up and running with the safety, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so the next step was going to be middle schools and then the high schools last, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned a grant?
We do have a TA grant in the amount of $280,000, a TA grant in the amount of $280,000.
And then you said they have to be certified?
I don't know if I used the correct word. Mr. Riojas, will you chime in on what's needed?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Coach Boyer, Mr. President and Mr. Gonzalez on the question. Yes, so the reason we are seeking approval to move forward with PBK is PBK pretty much is, is kind of a one-stop shop for, for us as a school district. These, these, this is considered a construction project because we have to, you know, we're going to be drilling into the wall, we're going to be doing wiring, access control cameras, voice monitoring, those kinds of items of that nature. And so we will have to have plans and specifications. The beauty of, of the district working through PBK in this project is that PBK has its own in-house engineer, engineering firm that works directly with PBK, which is LEAF Engineering. This is their area of specialty, security access control. And so in our previous experience. And so in, in our previous experience with our previous project, we, we had some struggles when it comes to the expertise involved when you're talking about, you know, the different components that will be required for the security access control. And so to answer the question, I think I went a little too long, but the answer is yes, we will have to have engineer seal approval to, to move forward with this project.
So by them having them in-house, obviously just means we'll save a little bit more money.
Yes, sir. If they have it in-house, we don't have to, I guess, go out and, and acquire an engineer to do that. Or if they have sealed.
Mr. Rojas, when I, when I read this agenda item, the first thing that I thought to myself was, do we need an architect or an engineer to do this? And I was reading on, on task B that if it's, it says here, if it's a public work involving engineering in, in which public health, welfare or safety is involved, which is everything really the school is, then yes, we do, we do need an architect or an engineer to, to develop these plans for us. But my question is, in the procurement of, of the, of the architect and the engineer, we, we do or we can get an RFQ for an architect or engineer. Did we, before I was here, did we or did we not get somebody for this? Or did we just pick, let's just go with PBK? Or who just said, let's just go with PBK? Were there any RFQs to who can do this for us?
We, we did on the past couple of years ago, if I might intercept, in a ject, sorry. And PBK is one of the companies that got selected. And we also have approved already PBK architect with LEAF engineers to work at West Coast High School on an HPC improvements there and some roofing. And both got hired, PBK as architects and LEAF, LEAF engineering at the engineering part of the project. And they are the same one that we have here because we have experience with them, that's why we're recommending them.
Right, but, but, but this is a different project than years ago. So every project, you, you give a chance to somebody, anybody else to open it up and say, who would like to, you know, bid on this or give us your qualifications? And we didn't do that with this project.
No, we didn't do that. I would do that.
And that's where I don't agree because I think you need to open it up to, yes, they've done a great job, but still have other people. So, but we didn't, we just went straight to, let's go with, with PBK.
Yes, that is, that is correct. And one of the things in the next agenda that we are explaining more, the, the grant that we have with TA was initially approved only through May thirty one, two thousand twenty one. So we were running out of time. So we figured if we go this way, we're familiar with them, they can have this approved, we can finish the project before the, or right about the May thirty one deadline that we have in the grant. Yesterday, we got notified by TA that the grant got extended one more year. So we can go. Would you, if you like to do a process of qualifications for engineers on this? And yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
And question, Mr. Sanchez, the architect fee, that's your normal rate, seven percent?
No, the architect's six percent. Sometimes engineers can go between six to eight percent.
Okay.
So this is one fee for both services. There is mostly engineering, the service, there's some architectural involved, if correctly, if I'm wrong, America. But there's mostly engineering because of the design of the access control system.
I have a question. The access control system, but that's, that's, that's what you see at the front door. That's like a mag, I'm going to ask this to Mr. Rojas, that's, that's like a mag lock system, right? It's a magnet based lock system with cameras, touch key pad, et cetera. And then it has that control panels that are set up and then also access within the front office, like you said, so they can review.
Correct.
Do you know what the average unit cost is like that per door? And I know that in the report, you also stated that you want to do card readers. So there's four, there's four middle schools. And how many, how many doors at each school are you planning to put the mag lock system for the entry, of course, that's probably one, they have one main entrance? And then how many card readers are going to be installed? Because each of those come with a unit cost. So I'm just kind of curious because I'm looking at the total. So I was wondering how many doors at each of the four middle schools are going to actually have system installed?
That's, that's a, a huge question, sir. And that's part of the assessment that, that the PBK will provide. It's part of their, of their fee is to visit the campuses, visit with the team administration and determine exactly what doors are going to, are going to be the actual magnetic, the actual voice command, the camera. And what will, will, will only have per se a access control or what's the word I'm looking for?
Coach, let me, I think, I think I can answer that. We initially did a walkthrough before COVID or during all the COVID bridges. And we're looking at approximately ten to twelve doors per element, per middle school that will have an actual card reader. That's inclusive of the main door at the front that has the, the iPhone system that can communicate with the front office. So not only is it the reader, but it's also retrofitting the hardware to allow the mechanism to actually open. So it's not a magnet based lock, it's the actual locking mechanism of the door. So based on what we spent on the elementary school project, we're on the cost per door. That's where we're basing the estimated cost on the, on the total project. Elementary is at five, five to seven doors apiece. So now that'll be, and that was almost six hundred thousand dollars. So you're looking at less campuses with a few more doors. So that's, you know, the, the cost of the project would be, would be about half.
How much did you say was the cost per door for the elementaries?
The total cost of the project, it was about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that does not include the engineering fees.
But, but you said earlier, did you say five thousand per door that you were paying?
No, 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 I said it was approximately five hundred and eighty thousand for the entire, for all ten middle schools. Seven doors apiece. And these are the reader. Every single door has a sensor that will indicate when the door is opened. All the sensors, ten, ten to twelve, depending on the campus, will have the actual card reader.
Yeah, because those are all, those are also wired and connected to the fire alarm system, correct? Right? That in case there's an emergency, something like that, those doors can open and they'll have access and they'll, they'll be.
It's, it's not, it's not connected to the fire system, but what it does is there's a, there's a release. So the, the campus administrator can unlock all the doors. And, and I'm sorry, you are correct. It, it will be connected to the fire system. So if the fire alarm does go off, it automatically opens all the doors and makes sure they don't lock.
No, and the only reason I'm asking, I mean, I'm not going to discuss it now in public, but I know that each of those systems, there's local companies that provide those services. I know just because of other districts that have installed them and they usually come at a unit cost per door. So that's why I was kind of curious, but we can discuss that later.
And is there a timeline by, by when this has to be completed?
We, President Guay, we were, the TA, we received notice from TA, was it yesterday, Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
That the timeline has now been extended to twenty twenty two. So May, is it May, May twenty twenty two?
They're like for us to finish it before the, the end of the grant, so that we have get to enjoy the, the project before the grant ends. But we have another year to work with.
The grant is in the amount of two hundred and seventy nine thousand is what it is. Okay, so how do we come up with four hundred to four fifty? Did we get a price for what the, like you said, the, all the equipment and everything?
Yeah, that was an estimate based upon the experience with elementary schools.
That's about a hundred, because it's four schools, we're going to, going to install them, right? So it's about a hundred thousand, a little bit over a hundred thousand per school.
And approximately fifty doors, that's what they were saying right now, about twelve, twelve more or less.
Twelve doors per middle school.
Right.
Okay. But we're still going to have time to talk about that later.
Yeah, we still, we have more time on this item than we thought, so, you know.
Mr. Delos, I'm sorry, just a quick question on the timeline. What, once it's approved, what, what are we looking at? How much time does this project take to complete? Just thinking, thinking ahead of next school year and trying to see if we can get this done before the next school year?
The sooner, the sooner that we act on this, yes, we'd, I'd like to have it up and going by the start of the, of our next school year. So more than likely, you have April than May to, once the architect designs the system and then it gets put out to bid. Again, that would be the next agenda item. And then, you know, going back and forth with the engineer and, and the, and the architects and the companies. And then we'd have to bring that back to you, to the board for approval ranking. And then we'd go back and, and negotiate with a top ranked firm. And if that's, of course, you know, if we, if, if they're in agreement, then of course we move forward. So with this schedule, we could have it all said and done by the start of next school year. Any delays, of course, would delay appropriately.
Yes, sir. So, so to answer the question also, the next agenda item has, has a schedule of what the estimated substantial completion of the project, which would be end of May.
I, I make a motion to table this and look into this again. We're, we're presented with something. It, it almost seems like we're, we're picking and choosing what you guys bring to us. And here, obviously, it seems like a decision.
We already have a motion that we have to.
Okay, there was a motion later on, okay.
And then.
Coach Nieto?
So that's my concern.
Coach Guay?
Yes, sir.
Resend my motion. If, if it's a feeling of the board to go to RFQ, I have no problem with that. I, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez is going to rescind his motion. Do I have approval by the, by the, by the board? Do we need to act on that by each one? So because it, we, we want to have, let's vote for the, to rescind because it is the property of the, of the board. Mrs. Saita, will you approve the rescind?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, you have asked to be rescinded. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coach Trevino?
Yes.
And Mr. Nieto?
Yes.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has been rescinded. And now we have another motion now on the floor by Coach Trevino to table.
Table this.
Do I need a second for, for it to be tabled? Okay, I have a motion by Coach Trevino to table.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Nieto. Let's vote for approval. Signify your approval by saying aye, Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the procurement method of construction for the design and installation of a security access control systems at all middle schools. Board determination, number one, of a procurement method of construction that would provide the best value to the district for the project. Number two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project. Or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Dr. Villan?
Board of trustees, well, this one was related to the previous item that has been tabled. We can probably move ahead with it or, or not. So, Mr. Rojas, do you have anything to add on this discussion item?
This is part of the other one, correct?
Yes.
So we might as well table since it's part of the other.
We can pull it, administration will pull it.
So I move to table this item?
Mr. Nieto moves to table.
Correct.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, we have a motion to table this procurement method of construction for the design and installation of the security access control system for all middle schools. For one, board determination of the procurement method of construction that would provide the best value to the district for the project. Two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project or board delegation of the authority to administration to rank the proposal to be received. And three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposal. Put it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye. Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next is the item sixteen. Closed meeting to discuss personnel matters. Texas government code five five one point zero seven four. One, employment of personnel. Two, resignations. Three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employer. E, Texas government code five five one dot zero seven four and five five one dot zero seven one. B, deliberation regarding acquisition of real property. Texas government code five five one one zero seven. Two, C, consultation with attorney regarding A, pending or contemplated litigation. B, a settlement offer. Or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the West Coast IZ under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state party, Texas clearings conflicts with the chapter five five one of the Texas government code, Texas government code five five one point zero seven one. And D, consultation with attorney regarding legal merits with the engagement letter contract for the forensic audit of district finances and operations. The time now is nine fifty four and we will go into closed session. Ten thirty and we reconvene to open meeting. Item seventeen. A, possible accident necessary and item discussed in closed meeting. Dr. Canales?
Board of trustees, the, I ask that you, I recommend that you approve the resignations of certified personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move. Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the, the, is it resignations or?
Resignation as discussed in closed session.
Is there any discussion? If not, let's vote. Signify your approval by saying aye, Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other items of discussion?
No, item B was a no action item. Item C, no action, and item D is also no action.
Okay. So item eighteen, adjournment. We have motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned at ten thirty two.